Alright, so we will call to order and start with the political allegiance.
I believe in the law of the United States of America and to the requirement for which stands one nation, one government, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one more sentence. Thank you. Alright. Sorry, my microphone's a little forward. Everyone can hear me okay? Um, welcome to the budget workshop. The intention of this meeting is for council to discuss and amend the budget. This is our first introduction to the budget this year and many counselors first year working on a town budget. Or this town's budget. So I'm just gonna start with a little procedural information. Um, we're gonna start with the presentation from Danielle, our finance director. Our presentation will be uninterrupted. I'm gonna ask all counselors to hold questions till the end. Then I'm gonna guide us through each page and ask if anyone has questions on that page. That's due to the number of questions we're anticipating. And I think that's the best path forward just because of the number of questions. I want to be sure all council members have their input and questions heard, so we can create a budget for the public. As always, the public is welcome at open meetings to observe their elected officials. However, this is not a public hearing. It's important that we are given the opportunity to do the job that we are elected to do and prepare a budget for the public hearing and referendum. Accordingly, tonight's conversation will focus on the concerns, questions, and input of council, and there'll be no public comment.
Madam President.
Please don't interrupt.
That has not been the practice of the past.
Please don't interrupt. We will not have people shout out during the meeting.
That hasn't been the practice of the past.
Ms. Dinsmore, please don't shout out during our meetings.
Well, that hasn't been the practice of the past.
There are two dedicated public hearings. They are on April ninth and May sixth, both at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. If you cannot make the hearing, I encourage you to submit your thoughts in writing. After the public hearings, there will be a municipal budget vote on June third from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Town Hall. As an additional note, the school budget vote is on April eighth from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, also here at Town Hall. Alright, so with that, I'm gonna shift it over to Danielle and she can share us her presentation and the budget.
Good evening. This is the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This year's budget was prepared with the understanding that the people of Richmond are asking for as much tax relief as fiscally possible. The budget was prepared with the help of the departments, keeping in mind that the residents require continued high levels of service and a continual support of employees of the town of Richmond. The budget draft goes through the finance committee to review, revise, and return to then the town administrator for a presentation to you, the council. Right now, the budget presented to you has no tax increase. The tax rate will stay the same as the year that we are in right now, which is fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per thousand. The total requested budget is thirty million, five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three, which is the total increase of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is a two point four seven percent increase. Four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight of that is for the school, putting their budget at twenty-two million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven forty-four. And the municipal budget is eight million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine eighty-four, which is a two hundred and six ninety-six, six hundred and eighty-three dollar increase, which is three point six seven percent. That's my presentation. I get right into the budget. Do you want?
Yeah, we can do that if you'd like. Some of your views had PowerPoints and everything, so I wasn't sure. So now we're gonna open it up to council questions. Um, and like I said, just due to the sheer number of questions I think we're gonna get, I'm gonna go right through up here. I think it'll be easier for Erin too. Um, we'll start on we'll skip the summaries. And we'll start on the expenditures on page six. Did anybody have any questions on that page?
Yes.
Alright, sure. Go ahead, Dan.
Alright, so I'm gonna have a lot of questions tonight, so just be forewarned. I went into this with an open mind, never having looked at this in detail, even though I've voted on every budget since I've been in Richmond for the last eight years. So please don't take any of the questions personally, or like I'm out to get anyone. These are just very general questions about what I'm reading and hopefully I can get educated on this as we go through it. Alright, so I'm gonna start off. If no one has anything else to add, I've got at least five things I have questions on, just on this page alone. And so I'll get right into it. So down in building, planning, and zoning, department eleven, so the line code five-two-oh-five, there is a line item here for office supplies and an increase for town uniforms. It says fiscal year twenty-three. So just looking at this, um, you know, if we, if we go from left to right, we had an adopted amended fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget eleven-hundred. The actual spent was zero. Amended and adopted for fiscal year twenty-five was five-hundred, even though we're only partway through the year, we've only spent sixteen. But then we're asking for another five hundred dollars. And I wanna know what that five hundred is going to, because it seems to me like we're not spending it, so I don't see why we even have it in the budget.
A good question. Danielle, is that something you're prepared to answer?
No.
No?
Alright, you might wanna make a note, because there'll be a lot of these questions as I go through.
So yeah, we're parking lot that question.
I think, I mean, I can't speak to what they didn't spend, but I think the, the intent of that is, um, you know, the inspectors obviously go out and, um, I think to some degree they feel like it's more professional if they're wearing, say, a polo shirt that's embroidered, Town of Richmond.
Yeah.
I think that's the intent of the line item. Why they haven't spent it, um, it looks like they spent it in prior years. Maybe no one was ready for a new year yet.
So I
But we can certainly double check.
So if it's just in terms of uniforms, well, I appreciate that and everyone looking professional. I mean, typical professional environments who are business casual, I think that's fine. I don't think we need to be spending money on uniforms, especially given the economic climate. I mean, this is just a start. This is five hundred bucks, but as we go through, I think there are little things that we need to take a look at that, you know, maybe we can do without, without them. Maybe we can get by. Doesn't seem unreasonable to me. Um, I've never seen any of our building, planning, and zoning personnel look unprofessional in any capacity.
Um, and don't they have lanyards for identification as well?
I think they do.
And it's no?
They don't have lanyards. They do have
Like an ID.
IDs, but yeah.
Out of that line item for those, um, forty-three dollars, it was a phone message book and a notary stamp. Those are the two items that came out.
Alright.
Run eleven fifty-two oh five. You're welcome.
Alright, we'll move on to the next one. Um, this is a line code fifty-two twenty, which is stenographies. This might be a little bit more difficult to answer, but we have a line item in here for sixty-six hundred dollars. We've never actually spent that much, but the, the key to this is that with the state zoning law changes, we now require a stenographer planning and zoning, more planning board meetings than we had before. So this is kind of an in-depth question. Our fees, in my opinion, for the town, when we have to use a stenographer, should be covered through the application process. So I don't think that this expense should be paid for through taxation.
Okay.
Agreed. Um, I don't know if, if that's
Are they already, you're already charging?
I don't know. As I said, that one's a little more of an in-depth question.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think you are, so.
So maybe that's something we need to look at, because this is going as a line item in the budget that we're going to be charging taxpayers for.
Yeah.
But this is just my personal opinion. I don't know if it's everyone else's, but you know, unfortunately, those laws got changed, but that's the cost of doing business.
Yeah.
Okay. Same thing for the next line item, five-two-two-six advertising. I surmise that's probably also covered by fees as well.
Yeah.
So if it goes in the budget, is there, is there a revenue line item for fees that we collect from building, planning, and zoning?
Permanent fees, yeah.
Okay. Is there any way to figure out if this is covered through those fees, other than basically bottom line, what comes in, what goes out?
Go ahead, Adam.
So I can speak to how council operates for public hearings that affect our office. Um, we charge any applicant that requires legal advertising to cover those fees. And I'm assuming that that is the same with zoning. However, also understand that should zoning board need to advertise a public hearing for any ordinance amendments, that that still needs to be considered, because when, um, the previous planner was here, and we did all the comp plan amendments and a big title review, we did run over on some of the advertising fees for that. So I don't know that that line item specifically is for application fees on the zoning side, because it may be more for the board to advertise public hearings that are required, that maybe not, that the town is implementing, or that the state is saying we need to change versus not.
Is there a way to determine that, so we can get the correct allocation on these line items?
For public hearings, public hearings, public notice, public hearings.
Specifically for zoning board and planning board, not necessarily for town council.
No, no, but it is in planning and zoning, so.
What's, what's interesting is, you know, we had, we had two years we were under budget, and then this year it looks like we're gonna be way over budget. So I can understand why we have an increase. But I just wanna make sure that our fees are covering it, because really taxpayers shouldn't be paying for public hearings that are requested through applicants. It's just, it's part of the planning process.
Right, it should be paid by the applicants.
Yep.
Um, so that'll be another parking lot of question to make sure. Alright, so you say you have five on this page?
Yeah, I've done, I've gotten three so far, got two more.
Yep.
Okay, so just be patient.
I am.
Ask a quick question?
I'm gonna, I think we'll have time, because Jim asked as well. Is it on this line item?
Page six.
Is it on this, is it on this line item?
Uh, was a question about
Yeah. Alright, so I'll have Dan finish his items, I'll go to Jim, though. Go to you.
Sure.
Awesome.
I, I got no problem if someone has something to add about a line item, I bring up that.
Yeah.
Just make note of it. Alright, so the next two or more of the, alright, you know, we're in a tough economic climate, and I look at them and say, are they, are they really necessary? And this is where I, I want some in, input from everyone. So line items fifty-two fifty-two and fifty-two sixty-two. So one of them is planning education training seminars. And you know, as supervisor, it's very important to me that we have personnel that are properly trained, they're they're knowledgeable about the, the newest techniques and what's happening in the industry. But also, you know, fifty-two sixty-two is some type of planning dues for all the planning board members. And I, I remember when I was on the planning board, I think we got subscription to like a American Planning Association magazine. I read it a few times, but generally all that information can be found online, and I did a lot of that myself. But I think just looking at overall, where do we want to spend our money? I don't necessarily think, in my opinion, that at least fifty-two sixty-two is worth what we get out of it. Um, and, and in fact, in fiscal year twenty-four, we didn't even spend any of it. In the year prior, we spent four hundred and forty-seven out of a little over one thousand. So we're putting this in our budget, we're charging the residents, but we're not actually spending it. So there's one thing to say, yeah, maybe we shouldn't do it, because you can find the information online. The second thing to say, we're gonna put in the budget and then not spend it. So that's, that's something I think would be helpful to remove. And then that's fifty
Fifty-two sixty-two?
Yep. And then going back to fifty-two fifty-two, which is, you know, planner and board members attend at workshops, seminars. So the last two years, we haven't spent nearly as much as we're allocating, which is five hundred, which is small money, but board members rarely are attending workshops and seminars. There's a couple of them that are free that we attend, if it's conservation or water related. I think we, we went to one virtually, was, we were dealing with the act of protection overlay ordinance. But I, I don't think right now that having these line items is, is necessary.
I see what you mean, and I, I agree with you in part. In my opinion, though, we have had a good amount, not turnover, but new members on the board. So I think before removing that, we should see if there's any interest of the, the newer members to, if they, if they be interested in doing it. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Alright, and you had, oh, you did, Jim?
Just, just I, I agree with Dan on the fifty-two sixty-two, and I think, um, you know, we have no idea, like, for example, we're, we're, we have no idea what seminars are planned, um, what the cost is, the frequency. I don't think we set, um, we don't set any parameters about, uh, when and if, and how many commission board members can even attend, so that might be interesting to look at, to see if there's anything that's critical for a new person. And I think, Dan, you'd be a perfect person to advise on that, since you were vice chair, um, and see if that could be reduced or amended in someone.
I figured Danielle's gonna go back to tell you and ask her if she has anything planned.
Yeah.
If, if not, I mean, I'd rather either take the money off, off the books, or reallocate it to something that the town wants better.
Yeah, definitely.
It's just a balance of like, what do we want going forward as a town?
For sure. Um, alright, so that was your five. I got, got them all? Alright, so we're gonna go on to Jim's.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we were going, because we said page six, I wanna make sure we were going by department, and we are, so we're in department eleven right now, so we'll go by department, that was it, so.
I'm going page.
Yeah. Alright.
No, I, I, my question was on, um, I figured it out.
You did? Alright, thanks for your patience. Um, so now we're on page seven. Who's got a question on page seven?
I do.
Anybody else? Alright, go ahead, Dan.
Alright, okay, so first line item in town clerk's office is office supplies. So we have a department request this year for five hundred dollars for supplies. We haven't had that line item previously. Good news is, we have the town clerk sitting here. I'd like to kind of understand why all of a sudden, um, this year we, we have a budget for it, but in the past we didn't need it.
So when I first came here, um, the previous finance director had absorbed some of the office supply line items and included it in general office supplies. Because the thought was that most of the supplies, i.e. paper, in town hall. Um, at that time, we were ordering the cleaning supplies for DPW. We were ordering um, a lot of supplies for a lot, a lot of other offices. And I did have concern with that, however, that was kind of in place. And I shared with Danielle that it's very difficult to manage a budget that I have no idea what the need is. So a lot of the departments, and we reduce costs and going online with a lot of things, less paper and packets, I have accounted on my side, but I have no way of knowing what other departments are accounting for. So I shared concern, because if you look at the general supply budget, it has gone over. Because there's a lot of departments vouchering out of that line item. And so I said I prefer to have control of my budget on supplies, where I will know, now know how to manage. I'll, I'll manage my own line item. And it's not managing other departments' orders, because while some things come up and there isn't always, um, you can't, you try a budget for everything, but some things will come up. However, I can't do that for other departments, because I don't do their day-to-day, and I don't do any of that. So I asked Danielle to, and I think we pulled some of it out of a different line item to include, out of that line item to include in mine, so I could manage that budget.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a question, I was going through this, like, all this, all the miscellaneous supply budgets as we go through it. Like, if there was one general supply, miscellaneous supply fund, how that's allocated. I appreciate what you're saying, because at work, I'm always fighting to control my own budget. Because I, once someone else controls, I, I have no input in it. And so I don't, that money gets spent, and I'm like, well, wait a sec, what happened to my portion? So that I can appreciate. Okay, I understand that.
On page thirteen, you'll see that five hundred was taken out of the town hall office supplies to be put in that one.
Alright.
I got one more.
Got one more.
I don't have to go first all the time.
Well, I, I opened it up to everybody. That's why we're going page.
So the next, the next one, again, it's, um, the line code fifty-two fifty, so it's dues, training, and seminars. So just looking at um, what we have for, uh, adopted amended for the last two fiscal years, what we're asking for this year. We haven't spent the money. It's been less than half. So it looks like it's, it's going to some useful things that we, you know, that we, we support. We go to a bunch of conferences, it looks like. I'm, I'm assuming they're important for the town. So I don't wanna okay. But we're not spending the entire budget, so it looks like to me we can reduce it and can still be able to satisfy the, the needs of the town.
So we could reduce it as long as I am the person, um, because I serve on the state Rhode Island city and town clerks as a secretary. I serve on our, on New England several committees, and so therefore of my cost for the hotel, do not come back to the town, that is covered by those organizations. So if I should not be here, or, um, I'm no, I
Mostly.
Or I decide that I am no longer going to serve on those committees,
Okay.
um, then those costs would be associated to the town. However, there's also planning in there, because some of it is to attend, um, NEMC, certainly for academy, for continuing education. Um, and that is for my certified municipal clerk designation. It was a three-year, um, program. My previous community supported that, not the town of Richmond, for my certification of three years to do that, as well as continuing education. Um, and which we need to manage, and actually, I'm, I've probably reached my master municipal clerk, I just haven't had time to apply. So those fees are important, and it's also important to grow a deputy, to have that certification, because it does take three years to receive that certification. Um, and it is a valuable resource for training in this field, because, um, you don't go to college to do this. And that is the applicable training on that. So I will say that, um, I would be comfortable with you reducing it with, and, but it's the understanding that the reason why we're only use, not utilizing the whole line item is because there's other boards supporting those costs for me to attend, and they're not town of Richmond costs.
Yeah, then it, then it seems like it's our best interest to reduce it to somewhere we're comfortable, where one, the town is getting value out of it, where we're getting our personnel trained, and they're most knowledgeable they can be. And then, um, two, we're actually spending it. Now, I understand that the budget could get, the money can be reallocated, but we don't want to set a budget and then not spend the money. We end up having a surplus. That means we're taking money from residents and not using it. And, you know, that should be returned to residents. Um, so what do you think you'd be comfortable with? Do you wanna take a couple days and read that?
Actually, looking at this right now, um, I will say that the quarterly meetings are a little low, um, cost-wise, but I'm, I'm okay with that. It's depending on what gets reimbursed. Um, the, um, nine hundred and twenty-five academy, that line item can be reduced completely. You can take away that. I, I'm not going to be attending, and nor Kendra will be attending NEMC this summer. With that said, the New England, um, cost for the hotel I spoke about, that is covered by the Rhode Island Association when it's Rhode Island's turn. We just had it. So I do ask that you keep the hotel, um, cost in there, because that is a valuable, uh, three days of, of intense training with all New England city and town clerks. And the annual conference of two hundred, because again, it, Rhode Island's not gonna be a host town, so that won't be reimbursed at that time. So I, I think you could take eleven twenty-five out of that and not impact any education.
Could, um, and should we put that into a motion, since that seems like something we're gonna do? Or do you want time to think about it?
I guess like, maybe that's a bigger question. All these things we're talking about, it's gonna be a lot more line items as we go through it. Do we need to make a motion? Do we just deal with it the next workshop when we see an updated budget with Danielle's time to go through everything?
What part, which
To do it, I think to do it all at one time. To
To do it all?
Adopt a bunch of changes and then vote on it. I mean, that's up to you, but.
Yeah, I would just expect any counselor that doesn't want to go forward the changes, amend that motion to withdraw whatever one they don't like. Alright, so that's what we got. Um, Jim, go ahead.
So just to clarify, so line of five-two-five-zero, we're looking to change it, and you, I saw you do the math there. Changing the department request from twenty-seven hundred, was it to sixteen hundred and change? Was that what the math was? It was eleven twenty-five. I didn't, um,
Yep.
But just that way, we can make that recommendation to Danielle. She can amend it. And then when we have the updated budget as we go through it to adopt it, she can say, for your requests, this line, we did this, this line, we did that. But I just wanna make sure we did the math right.
Yeah.
What was the number you had?
Uh, I wrote down positive reduction of eleven twenty-five. I didn't do the math.
Fifteen seventy-five.
Fifteen seventy-five, okay. So that's seventeen seventy-five in that. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright. Um, do you have any more on this page?
No, that was a
Awesome. Anybody else have anything on this page?
Oh, Mark, go ahead.
Danielle, I just wanna confirm, and Erin, I guess, um, this budget reflects, um, the additional making, um, all of the clerks full-time and eliminating the part-time. Is that correct?
And the town clerks, yes.
And the town clerk's office, right, which is what we did not that long ago.
That's why, yeah, the part-time was added into the full-time.
Right. So there's no part-time clerk anymore. That's, that's been eliminated. Yeah, great, thank you.
Awesome. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I just was wondering if, just a quick, um, explanation of line fifty-two twenty-five on the, uh, info quick, the quarterly transfer film. Uh, and then I tried to look under the technology section, like, didn't see it. So what, what is that? Because that's, um, I know it's only, um, it's like it's a four hundred dollar increase, but it's a total of, of, uh, twelve hundred dollars. Just what is that?
So that is, um, I would highly, we cannot reduce that at all.
Oh, yeah, I'm just wondering, I just don't know what it is.
So that is our, where we, um, back up all of our land evidence and our probate on microfilm that's stored off-site. So should there be any disaster with our internal IT, because a lot of that is now kept online. We don't keep physical books of things. However, we scan and keep actual probate documents, but they're filmed. And the increase is due to, um, I think you'll see later, and revenue is not sorry to land evidence, but the probate side is increased. So those filming costs, as well as the backup for the maps. Because now we have maps that are online, and as we continue to add more maps, it requires more filming, and that is a security feature should, because unfortunately, Richmond in twenty-ten this unfortunately Richmond in twenty-ten had a devastating flood in the basement. And luckily, we had backup film because a lot of the physical documents that weren't on film were not recovered. And those things that are filmed are things that need to be maintained as a permanent record.
Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Awesome. So we're good on seven. We're going on to eight. Anybody got questions on eight?
Page eight.
Yep, page eight.
Yes, I do.
Alright, sure. Go ahead.
So I just online um, uh, fifty-three eighty-four. It's um, all of the different software packages and things that we use. I just, just wanna get clarity. We, in that list of things, it looks like we have Microsoft Office three sixty-five for three thousand fifty dollars. But we also have Microsoft Exchange for fifty-two hundred. And again, Microsoft Exchange, to my understanding, is typically an onsite server, an on-prem server.
I think different programs have to work on certain things. I'm not sure which one works on that.
The only reason I raise that question is that Microsoft Office three sixty-five has a cloud-based exchange online option. So I didn't know like.
Yeah, I don't know which.
Because if we, if, if that were the case, and even if it was a slight increase to the three thousand fifty, that we could get rid of the fifty-two hundred. That would be a big savings. Just looks like it might be a technology redundancy, possibly. So I don't know if someone could look into that. Technical debt we wanna get rid of. Alright, cool. Thank you.
Alright, sorry. Go ahead, Jeff.
Same area, the uh, in red eighteen ninety-five. What is that?
Which one? Oh, wait, see me.
The eighteen ninety-five is for a grant program.
Named, that have a name or is it just?
It's goes with the AccuFund financial suite. It's just an additional module.
I'm not, to uh, computers.
What kind of module is it?
Uh, AccuFund is my, is the county. It's this right here that's up.
Okay, so.
It's everything for us. So there would be another module, like this is a um, accounts payable module? No. And this would be the grants management module, which would work with this. It would just be another additional module.
So you, could you look up grants in this module?
We could look up the grants that we have. Once I load in what we have, we'll have all the reports and you can get all the, you know, ins and outs, everything for everyone.
Yeah, the only additional um, comment I have is, you know, on this, I mean, we're paying, we pay over seventy-five thousand dollars for software and access. And one of the things that um, there's a, a lot of nonprofits and municipalities have the option to do is to look at um, pooling resources amongst similar towns. Do we, do we have anything through the League of Cities and Towns where we could look at um, getting a better rate on some of these software packages rather than going it alone?
There's no, there's nothing within the cities and towns that we, where we share these sort of resources for I T.
But I mean, like even um, a, a Microsoft licensing agreement where if we're buying individual licenses for our municipality, Hoppington, you know, they're buying them as well. If there's a way to look at, you know, collectively bargaining for a better rate on some of those though, cause that, I mean, it could be a significant impact on some of those software packages. Just a. I'm, I, and again, if we take that offline and I'd be happy to help from my perspective of working in the industry, if I can.
Yeah, I mean, that'd obviously be something we'd have to ask the league to do on behalf of all the cities and towns.
Yeah, or if they have any programs to do that, because I think we might be able to save some money there.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that exists. I think we'd know about. Which I don't. I mean, I don't think that would happen for this budget for them to create some sort of a master price agreement or something.
No, but it's, I mean, we could be in advance of next year to look. And if you um, it's, I, I don't, I, I'm conscious of other, I don't wanna direct you, but if you wouldn't mind uh, chair asking administrator startup communication with the League of Cities and Towns, I'd be happy to be involved.
I have no further authority than any of you.
Start the ball rolling. We'll see where it goes. Well, thank you.
Awesome. So we're on page eight. Any other questions, page eight? Alright, we'll go on.
Yes.
Oh, great. Go ahead.
I wanna clarify from Jim. You, you called out two Microsoft line items. I see the one in fifty-three eighty-four. Where was the other one? The different page?
It's at the top, I think. Cause I think it took a minute for me to find it too. The Office three sixty-five. And then the second one's the third line up.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Oh, I see. In the corner, it's hiding from me. Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, anybody have questions on page nine? Alright, we'll go on to page ten. Of legal services. Alright, page eleven, we're into the finance office.
Sorry.
Back to page ten?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't raise my.
Go ahead.
Okay, so um, department fourteen, um, the line item fifty-four fifteen. So we are requesting quite a bit more for legal services this year. Um, my understanding is it's because of a lot of the tax appeal litigation that we're handling. But just looking in the, in the past, um, it, we don't have the fiscal year twenty-three adopted, but spent quite a bit of money in legal services in fiscal year twenty-three, but the um, end twenty-four. And so far in fiscal year twenty-five, so I mean, we've been way over. Is fifty grand gonna be enough?
No, it's not. But I didn't wanna go crazy because you can't just, you know, up line items, people freak out. So I'm, I just figured more is better. I mean, we've been over budget for years now. Uh, probably three or four.
So how do we handle that? Does that come out of other line items or we use it from the?
Nope, it just shows that it's been an overage. And then at the end, it's, you know, washes from what we didn't spend to being over budget deficits in different ways. If you would like to raise it more, I just didn't want.
I mean, the same, my next question's gonna be on fifty-four forty, because the same thing happened fiscal year twenty-four as well. We were almost double the actuals. This year, we're, looks like somewhat on track. It might be a little bit high.
Awesome. Go ahead, Jim.
Just uh, on, on that fifty-four fifteen, and I don't know if um, solicitors at Liberty say, but what type of, what's the drive, the main driver for that litigation?
For the, for the costs, it, I think it was mentioned that uh, it's the tax appeal cases. There's currently and it's over seventy. Um, and they've, they've kind of taken, and again, that's outside counsel. And those have taken on more time and resources because they're in the discovery phase. And that is time-consuming. So document production uh, on that has been, from my understanding, pretty intensive. Uh, and it's still ongoing. And then we also had uh, two mediations. Uh, preparation for that on the part of the outside counsel, Mr. Marusak, as well as actual attendance at those, those items, at those events. Uh, so that's probably the driver. Those things are starting to come to a head, as you know. Um, I, I think that's probably the lion's share of that. As far as other, um, in other litigation, there's, there's one Supreme Court appeal. There are a few other superior court cases. It's, it's not that many. So the tax appeals are, are far and away the largest item.
Okay, so primarily the tax appeals are what are driving this potential increase in our tax.
I, I can't say that, no. I, I don't wanna say that. I'm saying that's the lion's share of the litigation expenses or the tax appeal. Is that driving every, is the?
It's in the legal, that legal line.
Oh, in that legal line, yes.
Yeah.
And this line, it's, the litigation um, is eighty-nine, it's at eighty-nine thousand to uh, seven oh two. Eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars is for the tax appeals.
Well loaded. Thank you.
The reason I bring this up is if we're gonna go and look at items to reduce, because we haven't been spending the money. I feel like when we're proposing a budget to the public, we need to be accurate with our accounting um, as a council. So if we, if we speculate that our legal services are gonna be higher than what we're budgeting for, then I think it's the appropriate thing is to increase that line item. I don't, I don't know what to increase it to. I mean, you could take the average of the last three years. It looks like this year we're gonna be trending similar to fiscal year twenty-four, if not closer to fiscal year twenty-three, since we're already at seventy-eight K. We still got a bunch of months to go. This is from December, probably higher now.
It's eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay, that was the number. And I guess that would, did the same thing for the line code fifty-four forty as well. Danielle, do you know what we're at for that, for the actuals? For this year?
That was only twenty-six thousand.
So we're gonna be over on that one too.
Alright, I think that's another parking lot one that we consider. As we go through this.
Yeah.
Um, that good? Alright, we got anything else on legal services?
I guess I, I would just point out, there is a contingency, there is a contingency line in, within legal, um, you know, which could make up differences in other um, other lines that run short. It's only five thousand, but just so everybody knows, there is a
That's a good point. Awesome. Onto page eleven. Anybody have questions on page eleven?
Yes.
Alright, sure. Go ahead, Dan.
Alright, so first off, line code fifty-two hundred, which is another office supplies. So again, other than fiscal year twenty-three, and I don't know what the budget was for that year. Um, because I didn't look it up, but every year we've been way under in how we're spending this money. So it looks to me that it would behoove us to drop this, this line item. I, I, I'd suggest at least five hundred dollars.
Drop it by five hundred or?
By, by five hundred. Minimum. Just looking at.
Eleven, it's eleven hundred now.
That's how much has been spent this year so far?
Yep.
Can you explain what, what the expenses were? Just looking at the past years, fiscal year twenty-four was down, it was five eighty-two.
We just bought a file cabinet for seven hundred dollars. So that was the big. It has to be fireproof for all of our, you have to keep all payroll forever. That was the big. Thing that was purchased. The rest are just regular envelopes, business cards, office supply, uh, adding machine rolls.
With that, not, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you were done there. But with that not being an annual expense, you might be on to something for next year, you know? So if that was seven hundred, five hundred does seem fair. In the future years. Um, so I, I'd agree with that one.
Then the next one, so same situation we discussed before. This is the education training and seminars. So in fiscal year twenty-four, we adopted seven thirty-five for the budget. Fiscal year twenty-five, um, we adopted three grand, but in fiscal year twenty-four, we spent zero. Somehow in fiscal year twenty-three, we got paid sixty. And then in fiscal year um, twenty-five, currently we spent.
I missed what line item you were talking about. I'm sorry. Fifty-two fifty.
My bad.
Okay.
I apologize. So we're requesting three thousand, but I haven't seen the town spend that much. But I don't see what value we're getting of having that, that line item be so high. I think there's justification for that.
Yeah.
It says N E S F G O A training seminar. Is that something you plan to go to, Danielle?
Uh, New England, yeah, they have different, actually I missed it for this year, so that's probably why the amount didn't come out yet. We're at thirteen fifty now. That's what we've used.
How much is that seminar?
I don't know. I don't know. I didn't go.
Oh.
I don't know what it was.
You think you'll get a lot of value out of it?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not gonna, well, I probably would go to next year's, but I don't know how much they are usually.
Do you think that's something we could reduce?
I think you could reduce it, yeah.
Yeah, so we could probably cut that in half. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
That's, that's doable? Okay.
And then moving on to the next line item fifty-two sixty for dues, these uh, various associations and newsletters, so fiscal year twenty-four, we adopted three fifty, we spent three twenty. This year twenty-five, uh, we adopted a thousand. We've only spent one fifty. It's probably more than that, actually December. We're asking for a thousand again. It seems to me we could easily cut that one in half, if not more, since we're not spending nearly as much. Looks like we're asking three times more than we're actually spending. So it looks to me we could drop this back to what we adopted in fiscal year twenty-four, three hundred and fifty dollars, and we'd still be
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. Alright, any others?
Let's hit on that page.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Just a question. What happened to the, did we have one of those uh, fireproof cabinets before? We never had one.
We hope, but we have to purchase.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
We'll do the old.
Oh, no, no.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Alright, um, so page twelve. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
I noticed a couple across the same theme that you're going for today too, but you go ahead.
Kim, stand yet questions?
Oh, you did?
Let her rip, Jim.
I missed that one. Go for it, Jim.
Um, actually, no, I had to check. I checked this up. Though I had checked on that.
Oh, you're good.
Alright, I had it highlighted, but I checked it off.
Okay, so going down to line code fifty-two hundred, department sixteen, office supply, same situation here. Um, we've adopted and five hundred dollars the last two fiscal years. We haven't spent it. Seems to me that we can almost completely remove this from the tax officer's office.
It's at two eighty-seven now.
I'm gonna ask a separate question. At the next workshop, is it possible to get the, the actuals as of March? I know, sorry, I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but it's like three more months of spending.
It apparently added up a lot because just for that line item, we went from actual of twenty-seven dollars to actual of like, what, what'd you say, three hundred? What do you say, three hundred something?
Envelopes.
It's just, it's the time of year, you know, you guys send out a lot of envelopes at once, I'm assuming.
It's a lot of things that go out that.
So how, how come the, the two actuals for twenty-three and twenty-four? Is, is that because we had it combined in one office supply line code? So it didn't get charged directly? Is that?
It could be why she didn't eat envelopes because she bought so many.
So would it be fair to reduce this line item for this current year?
Probably came from general office.
Aaron looks like she's shaking her head yes.
Well, I don't know that for sure, but that's my assumption.
That might have come from general?
So maybe this is something we can come back to.
Yeah.
Looks like maybe we can drop a couple hundred off of it. Okay, um, I'll move on to another line code, uh, moving down fifty-two fifty-six, books, manual subscriptions, so we didn't have it for fiscal year twenty-four. We had it for fiscal year twenty-five. We haven't spent it as of December thirty-first. We're asking for more. But this is the vehicle pricing guide, and, and I question why we need it because we don't have vehicle taxes?
Uh, for motor homes.
Forgot about them.
Yep. So they do still need to buy.
So price gone up is gonna be two twenty-five this year?
I don't know. I don't do that part.
That's a totally department. Yeah, that's his department, yeah.
No, no, Mark, what do you wanna say?
I was gonna say, if that's what he asked for, I'm assuming that's what it costs.
Did you have another one on this one, Dan?
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna keep going down.
I'll go to Jim.
Oh, not on, not on fifty-two fifty.
Yes. Oh, you're done?
You're done on page twelve?
Actually, that J D Power book was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Yeah, I've got two more on this.
Alright, go for it.
Alright, um, same situation here with the um, the annual dues for the tax assessor associations. Is that something that we?
I think she didn't do it because she was gonna leave, but he will need to.
Okay.
And I, they do have meetings all the time, so I'm not sure. Three hundred, they've used one forty so far.
Okay. That's something you'd do then.
Well, they did use three ten last year, so.
Yeah.
I would probably leave that, I guess, till we know what he's gonna do.
Yeah, that's important with new employees to kind of keep it and see what's gonna happen. So you had one more on this one?
Oh, no, it's just something I noted.
Okay, um, I noticed this, actually, I'll go to Jim first. Sorry, I just say Jim. Sure, I kinda noticed the same thing on, on Dan's theme here with travel, where travel's being requested at uh, seven hundred, which is an increase, but we hadn't really gone close to that in the past. The travel line is. Which is an increase, but we hadn't really gone close to that in the past, the travel line is line fifty two sixty four.
It's all about whether they're.
That's something like whether or not they need to go out and actual look at things and they don't.
We're having a reval this year.
Okay.
So the company will go out, but he will also need to go.
That's what I thought the answer would be, so thank you.
It'll be more important this year.
Alright, my apologies, we go ahead now, Jim.
Nope, that was the same question, cause it just, we, we look like we, you know, we're not making just over half of it, what was budgeted. And I see that there was a hundred add, and I was just, you know, thinking the same thing, if it was an opportunity to shave it down to, um. You know, like five hundred or four hundred, because we never came close to that.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it is only.
Yeah, we probably could.
I, you know.
We haven't had a rebound.
You, I mean, I, this is what we, we're looking at a piece of paper, we're just, so I mean, if you have a, I appreciate your perspective, your expertise on this, if you think it's pick you into.
We could probably at least take.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a small amount, but it all adds up, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so we can remove two.
Thank you.
Alright, who has any questions on page thirteen? Go ahead, Dan.
Alright, so a question about our, our healthcare benefits, um, how? How standard is it for municipalities to have healthcare buyback? Is that standard thing that municipalities provide for benefit?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so removing that would be a pretty, uh, would, would not be comparable to the other municipalities.
You know what would happen? Because we're honestly, we're ridiculously low with our buyback. You take the buyback away, then those employees that have the buyback are gonna be like, okay, well then I'll take the insurance anyway for twenty grand.
Yeah, I'm a pop online, okay. No, I wasn't sure, cause I looked at that and I thought that was, that was nice, because my company took it away. And that was, that was really nice, so basically, you know, people that don't take your health insurance are getting less total compensation. So they're actually like, they're, they're a better value. So just kind of curious if that was kind of standard across the board, okay, um, that's one, uh. Same, same question as before, so going down line code fifty two hundred, office supplies. So they haven't spent anything this year, but all the past years, they spent way under. What they needed, so it seems to me that we could, we could drop that. Just based on actuals for the last few years.
Possibly, it's hard to tell without the department head here, that's possible or not.
Yeah.
Um, but that's one we'll look into and get back.
What's the recommendation?
Um, not, no increase, keep it at five hundred, oh, with our recommendation? I don't know, it doesn't look like they go over two hundred.
Probably lower it to one.
Yeah.
Uh, the next line items are fifty two sixty and fifty two sixty four, dues and travel. So it looks like the, the dues we've paid every year, I assume you have to be a part of that association to be it.
Yeah.
Tax electric, okay, and then travel, do, do we still attend these meetings? It seems like.
Yeah, she goes to be.
Okay, cause we haven't spent nearly as much, is she not getting reimbursed for the travel? Cause the actuals are way lower than what the budget. I'm just wondering if it's, we don't really need to reimburse for, you know, it's a hundred and sixty dollars.
Gone to one, she went to one in October.
So just twenty dollars for the year so far. I think we could reduce this line item. Because over the past years, we haven't even come close to one sixty.
What do you wanna reduce it to?
What do we, what do you think is reasonable?
The travel one?
Yeah. Maybe fifty dollars, maybe?
I know, I was, I was thinking a hundred to be safe, um, just because travel should be reimbursed, you know?
Yeah, I agree. I, I hope that people that have that benefit to get reimbursed for travel are submitting for it.
Yeah, I hope they're using it, um, your question, like, is, is she using it?
I think, I think it's interesting, we're gonna go through this process next year as well, and we'll see what our actuals, you know, we'll see how. Well, we did it trying to shave some of these things down a little rough and.
Yeah, right. So we'll reduce it, we'll cut it in half and go to eighty?
Okay.
Alright, here. Yeah, but you said eighty, I like that.
Okay.
He said fifty, it's kind of in the middle. Alright, anymore on this page, Dan?
Yes.
Alright.
So we've got a hundred and fifty, oh, sorry, going down the line code fifty two thirty one, it's typewriter repairs. Uh, it looks like we haven't spent it, but it's been in the budget for a couple of years. This isn't the town hall general government, assume this is Aaron's? I don't, anyone know what the typewriters support?
Typewriter.
Trust me.
They don't, there is actually.
I will say, that I know there are some things that can be, like, need to be typed, but I know my workaround and I still don't use a typewriter. They're just being in the same profession there, but no, if they need it, they need it, but when.
We've never spent.
We've never spent it.
It's like you're, you're kind of predicting, are we gonna, we're, this is what's gonna happen, right, I know it's gonna, we're gonna take it out and it's gonna break, it's gonna break, like, July second.
Yeah, there was nothing to report, so nothing has been spent still.
But for, for one, for one fifty, I mean, take out of the line item, I mean, we have contingency, we have a fun, fun balance.
Yeah.
I think we remove it.
Yeah.
We haven't spent it.
They no longer type on the field cards because of the, um, database system that was incorporated, so. That's all online and updated, so.
Okay.
Yes, let's remove that one.
Those cards are the ball, and they don't update them.
Okay. And then the next line item is five three nine nine miscellaneous expenses. That's, I look at, I'm looking at the fiscal year twenty four, adopted amended in the fiscal year twenty four, actuals. It was thirty five hundred dollars in fiscal year twenty four, and then we spent thirteen thousand dollars, do we know what happened there? Cause this year it looks like we're on track. Wanna make sure we're planning appropriately.
Yeah, might be a parking lot question, just, um, that's a general government line item, so, um, Karen, would that fall under you? Who does that fall under?
All the departments put together.
All the departments put together.
I think it would be good to know, like, what went into that.
Yeah.
In actuality.
Yeah.
That's another parking lot one for the next workshop then.
That's fiscal year twenty four, and then also looking at what we spent on it for fiscal year twenty five. I'm gonna make sure we're estimating these appropriately.
Yeah. And that's the end of the page. And Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, line fifty two eighty two pest control, do we need an increase on that?
We do need an increase on that, we could only.
Only because I've witnessed that firsthand.
There's a dead one out in the parking lot, I had an employee text me this morning with a picture of a dead mouse.
You've, you've got, uh, but, what have we spent on this, cause I imagine.
If we get a cat instead.
Yeah.
What have we spent on that, uh, pest control? So far. For the public's benefit, I tried to help chase around a mouse or.
Six hundred.
We've spent six hundred. And we only budgeted for, well, that was last year, right?
Yeah, that's the actual for this year.
No, it's the actual for this year.
We spent six hundred this year, okay.
Does DPW have a?
They have their own, yeah.
I'm just wondering if that was mis- categorized when it was paid.
You think the pest control might have been, so?
I'm just wondering if DPW's pest control might have been put in the town hall pest control, and maybe that's why that number's high.
Maybe just take a note to check that, and then, um, just.
Yeah, we'll consider increasing it if needed, so there's no mice running around.
Okay, thanks.
Clerk's office. Um, so we're gonna go on to fourteen, we're in the middle, we're in Public Works, November nineteen, anybody have questions on this page? We're gonna start off with Jim this time.
I do. Just on the DPW, this, um, this came up because of the, um. Work for the tree lighting, and it was a thought that perhaps in the DPW, there was a line item. Of some kind of allocation for the expenditures they have in relation to the holiday tree lighting. Um, cause they do a lot of work, they do some construction, they need materials, they also have the porta potty that they bring in. And I think that's an event that everyone enjoys and values, but it might be helpful to have a line item with an allocation for them. Yes, for that, um, my question to you would be, I think you know. Firsthand what they may have charged back to other departments? To give an estimation, and I think, just so the publics are aware, we're talking roughly in the area of maybe six hundred and fifty dollars, I think. Um, but just so we know, I think that would be helpful to have that line item for them.
Um, I have a question, would that be for assistance, not only with the rec commission, but maybe a line item for assistance with? The commissions themselves, like if. I, I don't like it actually, I'm saying it, never mind, scratch what I said, bye.
Okay, you might, yeah.
Yeah, but then that would just like, I just think like the conservation commission, and then who's using what, and the conservation commission has their own line item later. Where it could be pulled from, so anything the DPW does for the town com is paid for out of that. So I kind of actually would affect the theme from every commission, but we're looking at six fifty.
So would you prefer that incorporated into the, the budget and charted back, like have it under the recreation commission, you're saying?
Yes, yeah, cause it's their event, and if they need the DPW help, they would. Go through that way, but then if they don't need the help, they could then use it for other events.
Danielle, would that be a better, like, financial practice to put, if it's help for the Christmas thing, should it go be under the rec commission?
In the rec, I think it would make more sense.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that we don't have a.
Yeah.
Funding issue, you know, yeah, okay. Yeah, so line on a rec mission for special events, alright, thank you.
Alright. That all you had on that page?
Yeah, thank you.
Turn it over to, turn it over to Mark.
Uh, just Danielle, um, how did we do, uh, on snow removal, now that hopefully we're done for the year? That's, uh, fifty three sixty.
Come on, it's like fart.
Don't wanna jinx it, but.
It was a light, uh, winter.
You've said it again.
Now, I knocked.
Yeah, seventy two thousand.
Okay, alright.
Out of the hundred.
Great, thank you.
Can you see, was there a, like, a large? How much, um, salt they bought, or?
It doesn't, well, they're all separate, but they bought a lot of salt, safe salts and salt, safe salt.
So.
A lot of salt, most of that is, the majority is salt.
So that means they'll have more for next year?
Good, alright, Danielle, you got your questions on this page?
I do, we'll, we'll stick with the normal rule for now, so the five year average is seventy two K, we're requesting a hundred K. You look at the expenditures the last couple of years, other than this year for the salt, and as Jeff just, just got, um. We're gonna have additional salt left over, I think we could easily shave twenty five K off of this estimate. Mark shaking his head saying you're, you're gonna screw us.
I would, I would be really caught, like, I, I don't know, I'm shaking my head too. I just, I would be scared to remove it and then have a terrible winter, I just don't know if that's the, that's gonna be worth the risk.
Well.
No, go for it.
They mix with sand, I believe, too.
Yeah.
With gravel, so, you know, it's not, um, I mean. That might be a little, little high, because you don't wanna, you don't want that storm, but I mean. Somewhere in that ballpark, I think you could probably do that, I mean, we've, we've been getting lighter and lighter winters.
We had a lot of ice this year, I remember them salting sand, cause my street's covered in.
Mm-hmm.
Sand. But, again, I mean, we're gonna be charging residents for this money, we may or may not use it. It'll get real allocated somewhere else, but we don't need to charge town for it, I'd rather not do that, and. I mean, five year average, seventy two K, drop twenty five down, you're at seventy five, we spent seventy two this year, we've got stockpile of salt that they already purchased.
I don't know.
I don't know that that's.
I don't know how much it's stockpiled. We had a lot of ice, so I'm sure they put stuff down.
Maybe we can park along that one, given.
I took a ride through there the other day, and the things were full.
I know a lot of their time out this year was not plowing, but rather for salt and sanding.
Yeah.
That seems even more, what we've been getting the last two years, is ice instead of actual snowstorms.
But it's still overtime, time, whether they're plowing or sanding.
Yeah, but that's a different line item, this is straight up snow removal, overtime's in line item fifty sixty. It even has, says temp employees normal up there, at least that's for fifty ten.
What all is included, Danielle, in that? Fifty three sixty, is it just?
It was sand and salt.
That's all.
Salt amount.
And some ice, go ahead, man.
There's a note, there is a note here, that if there's savings in snow, they will spend it on trees in the spring.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, and that's something we clearly need, so I, I would be inclined to, let's keep that. And let them allocate any, you know, any under, unspent funds toward, uh, toward, toward tree maintenance. I think it's, it's reasonable.
That makes sense to me.
I would like to, I mean, they don't have a bucket truck, so I'm not, so is it, is the tree work, is it gonna be?
It's contracted.
Yeah, contracted out.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, Gary and I were out on Beaver River Road today, and I was following him, and he had his hand out the window going. And he's just constantly pointing, this tree needs to come down, this tree needs to come down, they're falling, branches are falling in the road. And he knows he doesn't have enough money in his budget to do all of it.
Mm-hmm.
So we, this is, I'm glad that both Mark and Jeff brought this up, cause I think this is a bigger discussion, maybe we need to have this later on in this workshop. We've been spending quite a minimum money on pre-maintenance and contracting it out, and that was one of the things I asked about in one of the earlier town council meetings, about a twelve thousand dollar expense. For tree cutting, and when, when asked about a bucket truck, we don't have one. You know, if we're spending fifty, sixty grand a year on tree maintenance, we buy a truck for sixty K. Yeah, short term capital expense is gonna be a lot, but long term, you'll get the return investment, cause then you won't be contracting out fifty grand a year for that bucket truck. And if we have people on staff that are trained to do it, again, that would be worthwhile investment to train our staff to be able to handle the trees. And it seems to me that Ri- Richmond, Sam and Stone would be just as happy to take the trees off our hands to create mulch.
Yeah.
So maybe there's, you know, there's some pathway there.
Mark, go ahead.
Just, you gotta remember, you're gonna have equipment, but you may need, you're gonna need, may need more people, because you don't have. You know, it's, so it's, it's.
And bucket trucks can be expensive.
Up to five hundred thousand, if AI knows what they're talking about.
It's, it's not just a truck, it's the insurance, the person, everything that would then add to it, but.
That's why I said it's a bigger conversation.
Yeah, it's something we should consider.
That's a long-term investment.
Just, just on that.
Yeah, sure.
Do we know, uh, you, you might not know this, and I don't, I mean, uh, Cody's not here, but do we know if Hopkin County?
Gary.
Or, or Gary's not here, uh, do we know if, um, Hopkin County or Charleston have a bucket truck?
I don't.
You're, um, from a regional resource, that's all.
Yeah, something to borrow and share.
Do you know that they recently borrowed, I don't know what it was, something from Narragansett. Um, so they do, I mean, and we've always worked well.
Yeah, so there's a.
If, if there is something to be borrowed, I'm sure they probably would.
Might be a pathway for that.
Awesome.
Anything else, there anything else that we? Borrow or use from another net, our legs?
I think we lend our greater to Hopkin County, I think, is it that way, is it? Yeah.
Did borrow a greater.
Yeah.
Do we share our sweeper with anybody?
Not that I'm aware of, but.
Cause I maybe.
Yeah.
A bucket, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So.
You take this, I'll take that, or trade for the day, um. So we're good on that item for now?
Yeah.
And will, Danielle, you got more on this page?
Do have more, we'll jump back up to office supplies, line code fifty two hundred. Um, we got two hundred dollar line in, in the budget for it, but we haven't spent it in the last few years. Looks like this year we're at forty two as of December.
That definitely comes out in general, because they would, um, get a piece of paper, yeah, from the office.
Okay.
Need it, but.
So do we just remove the line item if they're gonna take it out of general?
Uh, they spent eighty dollars.
Or cut it in half then?
Are we working towards not taking out a general, and everybody having their own department though?
So, if I could clarify, I was, I was the only department during the office supply line item. So there was a general, but there was other departments that had office supply. So that's why I requested to have my line item restored, but because there's only certain people that do expenses. If they're not vouched to a line item, it's not pulled out of that.
Yeah.
Department's code.
So is this a bigger issue of just having town staff using the system appropriately? And being trained to pull their supplies or whatever they need from the right line code, making sure it's allocating. Allocated properly, so we're putting two hundred dollars in for DPW, but he's pulling out a general. Then, to me, it seems you take the two hundred dollars from DPW and you just, everyone runs out of general, or you take the general away, and everyone has their own budget. And you have to stick to it.
The thing is, Gary doesn't order his own things, so when the bill comes, it comes under clerk's office or someone else's, so. Somebody would have to say, though, that was for DPW.
How difficult would that?
It just gets lost in the.
Yeah, and yeah, especially if you're ordering in bulk or something, so we should remove this line item, so it can continue to come out of the other sources it's coming out of. Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
Couldn't it just be ordered out of, I mean, you'd have to obviously have the budget, but if you bought out of one place.
Yeah.
And like, and like small places, kind of like. It's bought at one place, everybody comes and picks up their stuff, you know what I mean? So you don't have to worry about budgets in every department.
Right.
It seems every department's got like five, like a, a minimum of five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
You know, office supplies.
Yeah, I agree, I just don't know what would be simpler for staff, and I know we just talked about you wanting control, and I think. Some departments need that, departments that use more envelopes um for notices, but the DPW isn't exactly sending out notices. Um, but they still need office supplies, so I think that they, we should just find a way for them to use their line item, that's my thought, but.
I don't think they're not using the line item, I think it's being charged to general that is over.
Yeah.
Continually, so I think that while we're budgeting and holding it in this specific line item, it's being used. As a, it's being charged to general, and that line item is over.
Don't forget, it's a bottom line budget, so it may not be attributed to the right. Department, but in the end, if you need it, it's there, it's just maybe not.
Sure, go ahead, John.
Yeah, no, it's just a question for simplicity, because I, I wouldn't want, you know, the clerk's office to necessarily have to manage that too, but um. What my experience had been in our company was that we had that supply closet area, and that's where all the supplies were. When you go, you sign out what you're taking, you write your department number, and then the cost accounting is billed back, so. There are stacks, reams of paper, there's pens, there's all those, there's office supplies, and you sign out what you take, and then it gets billed back. So it's centralized, because we're talking about departments in this building in DPW, because that's it, right?
Police.
Police as well. They have their own.
Every department has this line item.
So I can say that that process is used, because traditionally, the town clerk's office provided a lot. Ordered all the supplies, um similarly, I think finance ordered a lot for the second floor. Um, we will never see pens unless some state law changes on any supply of mine. Because we have an abundance, and every time there's election, we get supplied with states, so we save those, so I, it's not pens, it's not, um. It's more of, on my end, file folders, provides increase, we have to use certain legal folders, those costs have increased, paper costs increased significantly. With inflation over a year ago, um, so those has changed tremendously, printer toner. And those things, um, for me, dog licensing paper, it's perfect, it's a special paper perforated, and I think the police also will have that same thing. Tickets that they use.
Okay.
So, um, wild, and so if we ever have an overage or somebody's not using, say, a file index or a. Folder, it's, everybody said, hey, this is extra, is anybody interested in getting that? But I think some of the additions, like the whiteboard, is staff coming on and having certain things. And replacing old chairs.
So what would you like to do as a fine item?
I don't know.
Alright, we'll wait on that one, then, make notes, do nothing for now, we've learned, what, what do we got next?
Alright, this is, I'm gonna put it all together, so this is um materials purchase for town repairs, so it's line, line code six one, six two, six three, and six four. Looks like generally, over the last couple of years, we've been under, um, a couple of them, we've been over. Well, hold on.
Right under snow removal, those.
Under snow removal, sorry, for gravel, drainage, asphalt, patch, signs and. So. I mean, it looks like generally requesting the same except for the asphalt and patch, and there's a lot of potholes around. Do, um, Danielle, do you know what the actuals are so far for this year, now that we're coming into spring, and they've been doing a lot of drainage work? Gary mentioned the last town council meeting, they were purchasing more material for that.
Any particular one for the asphalt and patch you wanna know?
Kind of, I was hoping you could give me the actuals for all four, if you don't mind.
Just so you don't use asphalt.
No.
Which is scary, I know.
Thank you. Alright, it's alright.
Our actuals, um, hard to pull up, I'm sorry, we're asking for it in the moment.
My DPW's one of the largest budget.
Right.
Items we have, so. A lot of money to run that.
Gravel has thirty eight seventy three out, three thousand eight hundred and seventy three. The drainage has seven hundred and two used. Asphalt and patches eleven thousand four hundred and twenty. And street maintenance asphalt. Nope, you weren't.
The signs and posts is last.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's twenty five hundred.
Can you just repeat to me the fifty three sixty two, the, the drainage actual?
Only seven hundred and twenty dollars.
So it says twelve thirty one twenty four was thirteen thousand fifty nine. That's, this is line fifty three sixty two.
Drainage?
Oh, yeah, thirteen thousand was moved.
What do you mean?
It was in the wrong.
Oh, okay.
To fifty three sixty seven.
Oh, contracted.
So, yeah, yep.
Okay.
That's why the difference.
Okay.
Okay, um, so it is at like about seven hundred? That answer your question on those, Dan?
Yeah, I mean. Okay, let's, we'll start with the, I think, the easy one, fifty three sixty four. So, again, don't know what the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty three was, but they spent more than what they asked for in fiscal year twenty four. For this year twenty four, they spent about half of what they asked for, and so far this year, they're about a third of what they asked for. So they spent twenty five hundred out of seventy five. It, it seems like, other than this one outlier year, from what I can see, that we've spent less than what we've allocated. So it seems prudent to, to drop that budget requirement down.
I would rather see more work get done, I hate to say it like that, because I know they work really hard, um, but I would like to see, yeah.
Or reallocated to somewhere.
Reallocated to where it's needed and to get something.
Because that does, I mean, maybe we should take all four of these as a whole, because if you look at the actuals for twenty three. And, and twenty four, some are lower, some are higher, but the actuals for twenty three, I mean, I'd like to know what they, what they did, the twenty six grand in gravel from a budget of twelve grand. Eighteen thousand in drainage from a budget of fifteen thousand. And then for, is this year the drainage, they're way under, seven hundred and two out of fifteen thousand.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, maybe that's an opportunity to park that one and ask Gary to give us some reflection on it, because depending on what. They may have done already, um, being that, you know, a lot of that work has to be done this time of year. That he might say, like, for example, signpost, they've reduced that to five thousand and allocated somewhere else, or chip something off, that might be an opportunity. Yeah, yeah, so he might have visibility on that, and then it could guide us to make the right decision. I mean, we wanna see how we could save any, any, you know, incremental spending, but we also don't wanna um, cut our nose off the spider face and that. And, and not give them the resources they need to make the road repairs, because.
Yeah.
We all know how that, you know, how that goes, so.
Exactly, so that'll be a park, parking lot question, um, to see if we can reallocate it as needed.
Probably wood, some, you know, wood project, maybe. In uh twenty three.
Yeah.
There's new streets.
And they're stolen, and we have to. Um, as well as like the new crosswalk signs going in.
Mm-hmm.
Those, I think, probably come on.
Yeah. Okay.
It'd be great to have Gary's input.
It's still steel street size?
Only the good ones.
Independence.
Yeah, I got a few more items, so bear with me here.
We are.
So fifty three sixty seven to the equipment rental contracted services, so now we just realized thirteen grand got moved there, so they, they've asked for ten grand. Each year, do, do you happen to know what the thirteen thousand was for?
That was moved?
Yeah.
Now.
You know.
Contracted services.
That may be a question.
Yeah.
Why don't you move it, yeah?
Can we request what, what that was spent?
Yeah.
Look it up when I.
Just for the public's edification, so in fiscal year twenty three, they spent sixty three hundred out of ten grand budgeted. This year twenty four, they spent zero out of ten grand. Um, budgeted, sorry, I don't know what fiscal year twenty three's budget was, I assume it was ten grand. And then this year, we spent thirteen grand out of ten thousand, and they're asking for ten grand a year.
Alright.
Um, I can move on now, so the next one is operating supplies, which is line code fifty three seventy. So I know it's consumables, and I know. Type of facility like that, they're gonna go through supplies, but every year, they've been well under the allocation. So fiscal year twenty four actual, they spent a little over a thousand, they were allocated five grand. Um, this year, as of December thirty first, they're at about seven hundred. Eight thirty two.
Eight thirty two now?
They haven't spent nearly as much of what they've been requesting, so this looks like an equally straightforward one to drop down or reallocate somewhere else.
Probably tools, tools last.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I'd be comfortable dropping that one down.
It looks like you almost dropped four grand off of it.
I was thinking fifteen hundred, but I'm, I'm comfortable, um, cutting it in half, seems good.
Mark, what do you think? You think he thought four grand was too much?
Yeah, I think half is fine.
Okay.
What do you think, Jeff? What do you have there? Yeah, because I mean, tools are expensive. I'll get something.
Okay.
Alright, so that's getting dropped to. Twenty five hundred. Alright.
And then, one last thing I just wanted to point out. In fiscal year twenty four, the adopted budget. For, let's see, operate, um, sorry, fifty three seventy eight.
Fifty three seventy eight.
I gotta start with the line code.
Thank you.
Maintenance and parts. They had a hundred and twenty five K allocated, they spent ninety three thousand. The year before, fiscal year twenty three, they spent a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars, I don't know what the budget there was. So far, as of December thirty first, they've spent almost thirty seven grand out of a hundred and twenty five K allocated budget. Danielle, do you happen to know what they've spent so far out of fifty three seventy eight?
So, still coming up. Twelve pages worth, so.
Yeah.
They bought lots of stuff. Um, Wyoming hardware. We bought truck parts, truck parts, degreaser, miscellaneous gloves, wear bear, shroud.
Well, how much have they spent so far?
About fifty five thousand.
Is it, is a hundred and twenty five K really necessary based on spending the last two years, except for fiscal year twenty three? I'd be kinda curious to see what they spent this year twenty three.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Is this for like repairs, like anything they need to repair? Yeah.
Oil changes.
Right.
Headlights.
Right, like kind of basic repairs.
I mean, that's, that's not really that crazy expensive.
Yeah, so we could probably drop that one down.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, I, I'd like, obviously, you wanna get input from Gary on.
Need to know how, I mean, the trucks are pretty new, but I, that ass are over there, I mean. So.
So would the recommendation be to drop it to like a hundred thousand and get the input from Gary on that? So that's dropping it by twenty five thousand?
I think we could start there and see what Gary's input is, because I'd like to know if there's things that he knows he has to maintain over the next year.
Right, or anything major coming up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead, Karen.
Um, just. I'm sure you probably know, Jeff, the newer they are, actually, the more likely they are, though, to have to go out for repair, because they have a computer in them. Um.
Yeah, that's true.
The older they are, the more likely it is that our guys can deal with them, so it's kind of a trade off, I guess, but. I also just wanted to point out bottom line, like I'm just looking at twenty twenty four adopted was uh a million one eighty nine, eight sixty seven on the bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
And the actual is only off by like a hundred thousand less, so I just wanna caution that. Within the department, you know, they kind of stay within their bottom line, so we have to be careful. You know, I'm not saying I don't want you to cut anything by any stretch. But I just wanna point out that they're not off by much in the end.
Well, there are two things, you don't wanna spend money just to spend money, because you have in the budget, and the other thing. Right, just, I hope not, and then, the other, the other thing is, you know, we, we wanna look at this and make sure the budget's being allocated to the right line codes. If we see in some areas that they're spending more than they need, we should make sure that we're trying to estimate appropriately for the next budget. That way we know what we need to spend money on, it's hard, because we're blind to what exactly they need, and without having Gary here, we don't know.
Yeah. So we'll parking lot these, see about, we'll. See how he feels about reallocating to where it's actually needed, um, and for now, the proposal would be to reduce the equipment maintenance and parts. Down, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, because the departments have worked on this, um, finance directors worked on this, finance boards worked on this. So it's now, it's come to us in a workshop, so we're doing our best, uh, you know, effort to look at this, to try to see where we might save. But that may be incorrect, so I think we're just making that recommendation, and then I could go back, and we, they may come back and say, no, we need this, and that's helpful for us, that's the spirit of the workshop.
For sure, so, any other items on page fourteen? Alright, we will move on to the next department, sixty, public safety, on page fifteen, anybody have questions on this page?
Yes.
Alright, sure, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, um, line code fifty two oh two, which is postage, so. This, this one I noticed, it got dropped down, um, from where it was, fiscal year twenty four, went from five hundred to three fifty. Um, I was hoping Danielle, if you could provide us with an update on the postage allocation for this fiscal year. See if we're on track. Excuse me?
Three forty.
Three forty?
Yeah.
Okay, so three fifty. You don't think it's gonna be enough?
Well, I mean, it went up to three forty already, only because I think the price of postage just increased.
Again?
I don't know what it is.
I know, right, I think it just went up last summer, but, um.
So do you need, do we need to address this, make sure we have enough allocated here?
I say leave it. Um, that's what they're asking for, let's leave it.
Okay. Only other one for me on this page is line code fifty four hundred, it's on the bottom, legal labor war. Um. So we're going through contract negotiations this year, we're allocating eight grand, is that? Where did that, the eight grand come from, do you know if that's gonna be enough or not enough?
We haven't paid any.
Yeah, that's for fiscal year twenty five.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's their estimate, unto what the labor.
Yeah.
Negotiations will cost, am I correct on that, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we think we need sixteen grand total over fiscal years?
Over both?
Yeah. Hard to know with.
It's hard to know what's gonna come up, because it's more than just contract negotiations.
Yeah, you know the ins and outs, you've been through this before.
I mean, it could be, you know, somebody goes out I O D and. You know, there's something weird about it, or, you know what I mean, like, who knows what it could be, I don't, I'm suspecting we won't need eight thousand. Um, I'm not sure if the chief had something particular in mind when he put that number in there.
He, I don't think he did.
Yeah, I'm, so I think we probably could reduce that number.
What makes you think we could?
Well, because negotiations will be over in this.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're doing pretty well, I don't think we're gonna need a lot more of Tim's.
You think cutting it in half is uh too aggressive, or?
Well, we, we added uh two. Well, we, we added uh two grand in fiscal year twenty-four without contract negotiations. Got zero of it.
So you think going down to two is good? What does council think about going down to two? Maybe three?
Mark's an attorney, Tim's a paralegal, I do the same work.
Um, I bill and then I get paid.
Okay.
Alright, so we're cutting that down to three, it's just, it's, it's, it's hard to guess how much you're gonna spend, you know, um on legal services. But. We'll cut that down to three, alright, hold on, I'm just gonna note that, but we have page sixteen, anybody have questions on sixteen?
Yes.
You do too? Okay, I'm looking over here, I'm sorry, go ahead Dan.
So line code fifty-ten, we, it looks like we have a line code for mental health app advocate, says ARPA on it. And we adopted fiscal year twenty-five K for that, we spent ten grand. We adopted thirty K fiscal year twenty-five, so far at least as of December, there's zero, we're asking for twenty grand again, which is a reduction from twenty-five. Are we using this service?
They are using the service, but they have joined into a plan with other towns, so.
There's an advocate.
Uh, yeah, so we will be billed, but it hasn't been, they, they're still working out the, there was an agreement signed. So she said that they haven't done billed yet.
Is, is twenty grand, do we know that's gonna be the?
He said that would be good, so.
Alright, we got another one?
No, I just went, that, that one just caught my eye.
Okay.
That, you know, mental health's a really important thing, I wanna make sure if we're paying for the service or getting the service.
Yeah. Um alright, so on to page seventeen, oh, sorry, go ahead Mark.
So of the, we've got fourteen sworn officers, does that include the one who's in the academy currently? Yes. Um and I know we have a grant for some of that.
For a cops grant, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
How, how much and how much longer? And this is more probably for next year, but just.
Yeah.
I know usually those grants are temporary, so at some point, we're gonna have to pick up. Um.
That's a good question, that, that's one that might have to be parking lot did for, is that a verb?
Yeah.
Can I say that? Okay, thank you Jim.
There's sixty thousand left in that grant. For the cops grant, for the one that we got that was joined with the ARPA. So, I think we are pending a payment though, so we probably will go one more year.
So it'll get us through this year, but probably not beyond.
The next year of this budget workshop, we'll be talking about it.
Yes.
Alright.
That's for both the uh officer and the mental health.
Both of them were on the, yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, so we're all good on sixteen, on to page seventeen, anybody got questions on seventeen? Alright.
Yes.
Go ahead Dan.
Just looking at the bottom line operating expense, and in fiscal year twenty-four, we went over budget by about twenty K. And I was just curious if we're on track this year, you know? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe it's the bottom, I think the spreadsheet went over.
It's part of.
I don't have page numbers.
Oh, sorry, is that confusing to you?
It's a department number.
Okay.
Department sixty-one.
The same department.
Yeah.
Operating expenses.
Yeah, we're, we're on track.
Uh, do you think that was an anomaly?
Yeah.
I don't know if chief knows that that was an anomaly that year.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
Alright.
Well, it was fuel, state fleet ops.
Yes, the fuel is very expensive for the DPW and for. They raised their prices, that's why we raised it a little bit, opened up.
Why we have a seven grand increase?
Yeah.
Awesome, so on to department sixty-two.
Question.
Yes.
Department sixty-two, uh it wasn't on the summary page, is there a reason for that?
Police dispatchers, maybe it's within.
I saw sixty, sixty-one, and there's just a twenty-one animal control. Does that all, was up, I just wasn't sure it was.
Sixty to sixty-one, yeah, it's included with the police.
Yeah, fine.
So it should be sixty to sixty-two.
Yeah.
Sixty through sixty-two. Okay. Will that I have for that question?
No, that looks.
Okay, continue.
No, no, go ahead, that was a question, thank you.
Alright. Um.
That feels like Mark has one.
You got one, Mark?
Yeah, so, I just wanna understand what the proposal is. Um, is the proposal to add a full-time dispatcher?
He. They only have three now.
Yes.
Yes.
And he wants to hire another.
Why?
Because they're always short and the guy is actually dispatcher.
So what happens is the full-time, we have some part timers, we can't always fill, cuz basically the part timers work first, second, and third shift Monday, Friday. And then the weekends filled with either part timers or those full timers that want to work overtime. And if not, a police officer, which costs a boatload of money.
Right.
And the first, second, and third dispatchers who work during the week, if they work on the weekend, they're working at an overtime rate rather than. The regular rate, cuz it's over forty hours. So, in the end, it really probably costs more to do it this way than it does have a fourth full time.
So. Question off of that, so if. If an officer covers the dispatch shift, does it come out of the dispatch budget? Or does it come out of the police officer's police budget? In other words, would it be reflected in the actuals here, as far as what we're doing?
So this should then reduce the police overtime, well.
No, because you're actually adding a person, well.
In theory, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I get, I guess my, my point was if, if we add a full-time dispatcher. Which this does, which increases that, that line, shouldn't the part-time line be going down? Um instead of up? And that was, that was the question, I, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
Adding a full-time person and making it more efficient, but there should be reductions other places.
Yeah.
And that's why I was puzzled when I saw that the part-time line was also going up. Um, if, almost fifty percent.
Yeah, that's.
So maybe we can check into that.
Yeah, that's a good one, so that's gonna be checked with chief, um and then back to the next workshop, we'll have an answer. Alright, any other ones?
That gets cut in half, that's got thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, yeah, and again, just a question, I, you know, is, would it, would we, would we, with that extra person? Would we expect the overtime number to go down as well?
Right. Do you have any more on this page?
That, that's all I have.
Alright, we'll go to Dan.
Mark on a big one, but I got, I got a little one, sorry, um down the line code fifty-two oh three, department twenty-one now. But twenty-one point five two oh three. Just looking at, again, this is the supply stuff, so fiscal year twenty-three, they spent thirty-two hundred. And then fiscal year twenty-four, they asked for twenty-five hundred, only spent five sixty-eight. They asked for thirty-five hundred this fiscal year. But as of December, they spent four seventy-two, Danielle, do you know where they're at currently?
Um.
Department twenty-one.
One thousand twenty-four dollars.
Oh, that could probably comfortably be cut, if you'd like to encourage it, what do you think? Mark, you have something to add?
My only thought is Jessica just started in that position.
True.
Uh whether she wants things that we don't have, I, I would be inclined to keep it. You know, you'd wanna cut some of it, fine, but I wouldn't just necessarily go bypass.
Right.
Past experience, especially in the last, last year, um cuz it was kind of. Fill, she was filling in, and so it wasn't really, this is my position, this is what I want, so I think. I'd be inclined to try to keep it close to, you know, where it, where it's budgeted.
Can we ask for her input? I don't know if she was able to provide it in terms of this budget.
Yeah, you can ask, sure.
You have something to add?
Yeah, just to ask, cuz if she, she spent a significant amount already, maybe if that's, you know. Uh new, new catered or whatever, we don't know what she spent it on, but maybe if we ask her, if she said, yeah, I've already bought this, this, and this, I should be set. Been there a while, right?
She has been, but she got promoted, but you know.
Maybe she could advise us if like twenty-five hundred would be enough, or three thousand, you know, cuz I think that's. No?
Yeah.
I think Aaron's just saying she is new to animal control, she was a dispatcher before, I mean, she was kind of filling in. Weekends or if Anne was on vacation, is that what you were?
No, I'm saying, cuz didn't, is DPW building out the ACO shelter addition there, so some of those costs. Might be associated with fitting that out, I don't know if that's been done, but that's been a long time project.
Yeah, what it said in the description is normal ACL supplies, so it's a pretty vague, um, yeah, so I can.
Yeah, maybe ask her.
Yeah, that could be one that's parking lotted, and we get back to it the next time.
So far, she's bought a garden hose, dish soap, contractor bags, cat litter, soap, deodorizer. Fly traps and paper towels.
Washing a lot of.
Animal control violation forms and a file cabinet, so.
Well, like a nice, uh, nice new bag. Nice, nice new pen for your new desk, yeah, sorry.
No, was it twelve hundred dollars?
Total. Total, she's at one thousand twenty-four.
One thousand twenty-four.
So, so what's that, I mean, she is getting subsidies, like, you know, you get a new office, you made a new filing cabinet, we could comfortably reduce it. Um and then if there's something specific, go from there.
She still has twenty-five hundred dollars to spend this fiscal year.
I know, right, she's gonna, she's gonna announce, she's in this conversation. And that could be, that could go towards anything that she needs that's new to her in that position, and then next year would just be normal supplies again.
Right, and we could drop it.
Right, I'm comfortable with that.
Let's, let's get some input from her.
Alright, that one's parking lotted, anything else on this page?
Yeah, same, very similar, um following down the line code uh to one point five three two three, vehicle repairs, maintenance. So fiscal year twenty-four, we allocated two grand, we only spent four fifteen, this year we allocated two grand. We spent eight eighty-three as of December, you know where we're at in that one, Danielle?
One thousand eighty-three dollars.
Alright, so. Alright, yeah.
Cuz you never know when a vehicle's need to repair.
Right.
We, we have a history of, of not spending up to two thousand dollars per year.
Which means it's probably due, just saying.
She has been living hers along.
Yeah, what, what?
This is a van?
What are you gonna add, Jeff?
This is a van, yeah.
Alright.
What's the one that?
What are you gonna add, sorry?
No, I was just wondering how new it was.
Oh, how new it was?
The Dodge.
The Dodge?
Pretty sure. We'll reduce it, and it's like transmission fault.
Yeah, probably.
Alright, so is that in a night eighteen? Alright, now it's nineteen, anything on this page?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, first line code, two one point five three four of the veterinarian. Gonna speculate that this was up and down depending on how many animals she brings in. But it doesn't seem to me like we have spent the budget we've allocated in previous years. And are you able to get the actuals for this one too?
It's fifteen forty-five right now.
Never spent more than two thousand. But you never know how many animals are gonna get away that you're gonna capture.
Do we? There's a note here, and I know sometimes these are old, so I don't know whether this is new or not. Spay noodle law now requires impound in animals to be done by the municipality, is that new like this year?
No, I think that's been.
Alright, so this is an old note from way back, okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
But it's still a requirement, it's still, yeah. It's an old.
The prior year's actuals should reflect that, that's, that's just.
Okay, I got you. So that's one we could reduce?
Yeah, probably modestly, like I would say reasonable would be like five hundred, cuz this year it looks like she might get close to two grand. Maybe well to the end of the fiscal.
So reduce to two thousand. Alright, anything else on this page?
Yeah, so looking at department twenty-two, which is recreation, the question about how. Recreation fees and then the salaries for the rec counselors is allocated. So we've got a, a budget here, we're getting asked for a thirty thousand dollar um budget for counselors. Do the, do we know if the fees for the recreation, summer recreation cover counselors?
Well, the kids fluctuate, last year it was ninety-nine kids, and it's five hundred dollars a piece.
Right, and then, then if we need more counselors, we've, we've hired more, if we need less, we hire less, so it does fluctuate based on the amendment.
Yeah, last year we were over budget because we were short on counselors, they had to hire a new one, another one because there were so many.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cuz I mean, yeah, if you look at it, it's just the way the math works out, cuz it's allocated this fiscal year, we're almost thirty grand where we allocated twenty-six thousand. But the year before, we were at um twenty-four K for the budget, but we spent eighteen thousand six.
Right, I think that would be like, if we go all the way to the end with the revenues, it would show what we're bringing in for camp fees.
Well, ninety-nine kids times five hundred is forty-nine five.
Yeah.
So, that covers. The part timer, our. Counselors. Of thirty thousand. Plus the whole director. It doesn't.
Page thirty-three, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Recreation.
Yeah, I was looking for the recreation camp feline.
Yeah, it's recreation event.
Oh, camp, huh, thanks, Mark. Um, so yeah, so these should offset each other, right, I'm sure that it's just.
When Laura was here, she actually like did the numbers on that, and we've raised the rate to. To reflect that we needed to bring in more revenue to recover the cost. We've, it's always tried to be kind of a revenue neutral thing, we're not trying to make money on it, we're just trying to.
Right.
Provide a service to the residents.
Yeah.
When you're ready, I, something I wanna say about the whole recreation thing though.
Like the department as generally? Okay.
It does affect the rate of the.
Is that the other item that you had on the agenda today?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
If you wanna talk about it now during this department. Yeah, may as well.
Makes sense.
Kinda how I thought those items were going.
Yeah.
They were just there for transparency.
So, um, it was suggested to me, and I think it's a great idea, that we consider having. What we call maybe a community department with a director. And underneath this community department, the rec department, senior, and human services. Um and this director would handle all the human services work. Oversee the uh senior center. Cuz right now, there are a lot of people that are kind of supplementing at the senior center. Um so it would kind of bring that all under one umbrella, and then. That director would, in kind of in conjunction with the rec commission, do all of the. Um, pretty much everything but summer camp, Easter egg hunt, hawk fin, um February vacation camp. Um whatever else they do, Christmas, Christmas. Um, and so all we would really need in rec would be a summer camp director. So we would be able to reduce that director line significantly and hire someone just for summer camp.
You just review it, so what would fall under this community department?
I don't know if I like the name of the department.
But on, under that department would be rec, senior, and human services, yeah.
It, it makes sense because they all overlap and they all like communicate with each other, but this wouldn't be. Like communicate with each other, but this wouldn't be an additional person, this would be like the rec director that we're hiring anyway, would be this position.
I actually thought as. I would like to think it'd be someone like Kate who, because this person's job would encompass everything that's happening in human services.
Right, now, okay, so I was thinking the, the rec director would encompass it, but you're thinking Kate would, so it's the same concept, just a different person.
Exactly.
Okay. Very visual people.
So, um, you said rec department, senior activities and human services, so. Um, like you were just mentioning Kate, so if Kate, in this, this concept of a community department director. Then of the rec department would be just, um, a, uh, summer camp part, that would be the summer camp, like.
So like, for instance, this part-time rec director person, person, I would propose to reduce that number to like six thousand.
Okay.
Um, and then the re, the remainder of that, which I think is, um, another seven change, Danielle has all the numbers, but. Um, would go towards, because, um. Kate's not full-time right now, so we would have to allocate something additional back to her to, for this to be a full-time position.
And we already have her in this anyway.
Right, right.
And then this, um, yeah, so senior activities, that would fall under this, and you said that would be collaboration with the rec commission.
To do the other.
Which they, which they do, but yeah, they're dotted line anyway, but they, um. What's interesting is, I think for the charter, the technically still the rec director reports to the rec commission, oddly.
Yeah.
But that community department director would not, because that doesn't exist, so the rec. The person who manages the summer camp might in fact report to the technical report, you know what I mean, like, it, it's a different, it's a different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'd still report to the commission and then.
Yeah, but the, the community, whatever that would be, might not.
The bottom line would be the same, it's just reallocating it around a little bit to make it work better.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna say that for sure, I think Danielle did work out the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she would, it would be a difference, uh, well, her, she'd be in paid by the grant. And the arbitral grants.
Okay, so currently, we're talking, I didn't know you meant we said her.
And then move in the money from the recreation. It would be, um, for this year, it would be a difference of about six hundred dollars. Would need to be out of the contingency wages, and then next year, uh, she actually is looking at another grant. For what she's doing now, um, that would probably pay for it, but if not, it would be about twenty thousand. Difference, and she would oversee all three.
That's a twenty thousand increase over what we're paying now for the recreation director and the senior center stipend.
Yeah.
Those are thirteen K total, sorry, thirty K total. So we'd be looking at a fifty thousand dollar salary?
Yes. Yeah.
In twenty twenty-six.
In twenty-six.
Not this year, next year.
Yeah.
Also be fiscal year twenty-seven. Well, I guess we doubt it would be fiscal year twenty-six as well, but it covered. And that'd be full-time position?
That would be full-time, right now she's not full-time.
And does, that doesn't include benefits either, that fifty K?
That does include that.
Oh, okay.
We have to give benefits to people.
All right.
But I don't.
Not medical benefits, she doesn't need that, but that's, you know.
Okay, doesn't take them.
That's like a twenty thousand dollar saving.
Yes.
She doesn't take them because she's part-time with that.
No, she doesn't.
No, she.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
I just, yeah, sorry, I think too, if we're having a new, I mean, uh, but plan sounds great, don't get me wrong. But I think too, we have to think about this in the sense that we're having a new department position that we would need to advertise for. So I think we're getting a little, like, you know what I mean, cause I think she'd be great, but I think we need to be open as far as that might be.
Right.
It might not be somebody who would not be taking benefits, you know what I mean, or might be somebody who'd be taking benefits. Does that make sense? Oh, that makes sense. One way it's silent.
It does, but it doesn't because, because, because my understanding was that. Um. Like if we advertise the position, then. Kate would be out of a job.
Right, and so if this is a department, is that what you're saying, I, I just don't understand.
Right, I mean, I don't think you're obligated to post it, I don't think there's any law that, that you have to post it.
If you're making a new position, you'll have to post it?
No, no, because it's changing a current position, so like. The human services director would be this human service, it would, the, the human services director's job responsibilities would change. To be the oversight of these, I think that's probably the better way to phrase it, sorry, but like the oversight of these three areas, the human services. The senior, um, activities with, which is just, uh, Mr. McGinnity, and then the rec commission, which is another part-time position that's just running summer camp.
Okay, so.
There wouldn't be a new person coming in as the human services director, if she got moved up, so, yeah.
Asking, and, and as long as like, y'all look at all that and make sure that sounds good and it works out, I'm fine with that. I just, I was just thinking, it, it might be a different scenario, but although you guys described it, it wouldn't be.
Right.
So.
And I hear you, Jeff, I know what you're thinking, cause I'm sure you're like, probably in Westerly, you guys are all union, so everyone thinks, oh, new job has to be posted, but. It's, it's not that scenario here, we're not, we're not union and it's a department head position, so it wouldn't. Even if we did have a union fall under it anyway.
Yeah, I'm just going under the guise of, it's a different, totally different name, from human services director or whatever she is, so that would be a new job. So, I mean, yeah, I don't know.
It's something to consider, I like the idea of restructuring, but just concerned with the costs and how it will look, I mean, we've made a lot of other changes too, and we have more to make, so.
Okay.
I think that's a parking.
Love to see.
Yeah, we'd love to see how that looks, anybody disagree?
I need to see.
See it on paper, yeah, all right, so, um. Did we cover everybody on nineteen, page nineteen, we're kind of in the recreation department, um, onto page twenty. We're still in the recreation department, um, I'm gonna kick us off this time, if that's okay with everybody. I just had one, which was the department that's new, was the summer camp scholarships of two thousand dollars, um. I guess there's four scholarships at five hundred dollars each, and. I just wanted to learn more about the program, where that money is coming from, is it coming out of, is it revenue that's coming in from the summer camps? Like people paying extras donations into that, or is it straight out of our taxes, it's straight out of our taxes? I just don't know if I wanna add a program like that, um, and maybe the last person, you're expecting to say that as somebody who. Is, is very supportive of everybody in need, but I would rather see our summer camp become C-C-A-P approved. And inclusive of represent, of recipients of that program, rather than making a new one that's. Kind of similar, um, but I, I wanted to cut that line item completely, because I just didn't think it was necessary. Yes.
Based on your email to me today, I did reach out to the state about that C-A-A-P program, C-C-A-P.
Yeah. Yeah, childcare, um, assistance program, I'm so sorry, it covers parents while they're working, um. It covers daycare, but then in the summertime, it also covers summer camp.
So, um, I haven't. Spoken to anyone there yet, I did reach out, they called me when I was upstairs in police negotiations today, so I hadn't connected with her. Um, I just don't know what it would entail for us to become compliant with that, it could be that, like, it changes the ratio. Of students to counselors that would cost money, I'm just worried, whatever it takes might cost money. Um.
We don't know.
It might be more than two thousand, I don't know, I just wanna point that out, I don't have a preference one way or another about this at all.
Yeah, we, we don't know what it costs, I think that's something to look into, what do you got, Mark?
I was gonna say, I don't, I. There, there, there may be people who don't take, need to take advantage of, used to call it DHS back in.
Department of Human Services?
Take advantage of that year round, that's a year round, like you said, it's a year round program, pays for childcare and during the summer, summer camp. But there may be folks who don't take advantage of that during the year, but need help with summer camp. And I think we should be in a position to provide them with that help if they need it. Um, so I, I would not support eliminating it, uh, if we don't use it, because we have, we have, you know, we decide. We're gonna accept what I'll call DHS payments, um, that's fine, but I'd rather have the money available, it's two thousand dollars. And if we're able to send four more kids to summer camp for that reason, then I think we should do it.
Mrs. Martin has been clamoring for it for years, it's been a little bit of a point of contention.
Yeah.
Yes.
Summer's hard for people, because it's a whole day of, you know, they're used to having their kids in school and they don't, and it's, it's. It's more difficult.
Just, just a question, how many kids do we have that go to summer camp?
Last year it was ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine kids and we have four scholarships, how do we determine which four get that?
Martin does it, well, that's the intention.
So why doesn't the school district pay for it?
Right, so that, that, when I sent that question out and I said, you know, who gets this scholarship, not who specifically, but what are the qualifications? Like, we don't know what the qualifications for this are.
Yeah.
How do we not know that more people qualify, and then next year we'll be sitting here looking at ten grand, you know, and I just, I'm not comfortable starting a program. Without any information about the program, um, that, that's just my thought on it, and.
Yeah.
And the reason that, I don't know, I don't know what it takes to become a compliant camp, so I think that that's something that we could look into. So that way we can be more inclusive.
Just think if there's more than four kids that are in need.
Yeah. Anyway, I only heard one opposition to that, so kind of going with the theme of the rest of the night, it, it's something that would be. Parking allotted to be removed.
Not opposed to removing it, I've been on the fence with it.
Yeah.
I'm, and I've got conflicting feelings about it in my head, and I think everyone has pretty much said what I would say, so.
Okay.
Is there a way to look at, um, even if we, like. It's five hundred dollars is the full coverage for the camp, right, for the certain, for the period? Maybe it's even a, uh, a graduated or a need-based percentage of the total cost that would cover more kids. You know what I mean?
I just don't know how do we, how do we as staff determine who qualifies?
Well, right now, we're not doing it, it's, it's Mrs. Martin, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, but I don't know if she's gonna wanna do that for, you know, every family, or if it's just a matter of. You know, I know I have four scholarships to give, and I know these four kids can't afford.
Not like that. You know, I, I don't know, I'm just not comfortable with it as it is, and it sounds like council majority agrees, so I think it should be something that's removed. Um, like, they've been going on a whole night. So, I'm gonna note it as removed, is there anything else on this slide?
Note my objection.
Note the objection, that's why I was wondering at the beginning if we should go through motions on every item, um, just to get record, but anybody else got anything on this page?
I just had a question, just on the, um, and I may ask Erin for her input here, just on the, um. Lines fifty-three ninety-four and fifty-three ninety, yeah, fifty-three ninety-four pretty much. Uh, this is the recreation director and it's Easter fishing derby, Christmas tree lighting, movie night, day trips. And the line above it says revenue increased to offset field trips, that two thousand, but also. I mean, I know the recreation commission really plays point on the Christmas tree lighting. I think we could get creative with this two thousand dollars, no, yes, like, no.
Um. So, the rec program expenses in fifty-three ninety-one is strictly for summer camp.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that is, so fifty-three ninety-four rec other events. Um, typically what is done is that the rec director. Line item twenty-two five three nine one, and the rec commission, which is later on in the budget, which also, I think is a five three nine one. It's just a different department, which is two thousand dollars previously, split events. Um, the tree lighting has expanded tremendously. Over the last few years, it is a very popular event that has been well-attended. So those costs have been split between the commission and, um, the rec director for those events. And I think Danielle, you maybe feel the chime in on some of this too, and so currently, I believe, the last time I asked you to remove it. Uh, look at it, the rec commission had eighty-eight dollars left in the account. That's.
Yeah.
Okay, so for this year, and that was all absorbed with the tree lighting. So I also know that, um, the rec event other line item is significantly reduced. And you can see the actual numbers and what the budgets are. Um, this year, I don't know where we're at on that line item. What's left? Um, five three nine four, twenty-two five.
There's nine hundred and twenty-three.
There's nine hundred and twenty-three dollars left to do the, um, Easter fishing derby, I both, I don't know if movie night.
Okay.
Um, or day trips, or the day trips as well as, I think the February vacation line item comes out of that.
Yeah.
It probably already did.
She did?
Yeah.
She did.
Okay.
So, I know we kind of previously talked about that, but the umbrella of having one person oversee some of those events. I think might bridge some of these gaps that we're having in. Because of the unique relationship in the charter between the rec director and the rec commission, and they are operating independently. With similar events, the commission supports these events, mainly in the past, the Christmas tree lighting. And as you'll see again further down the light and the, um, budget, the rec commission is asking for an increase. Because now we have a very, we have a full rec commission and active board, and we wanna do these things. Currently, there, we have no rec director, as Morgan's resigned, um, and so if. Things are gonna change, obviously, the emergency going forward is going to be summer camp, getting someone in place. However, now the rec commission had to make a decision, are we going to continue these events, Easter and fishing derby? Cause that's in a couple weeks, and I don't believe we're gonna have a rec director or a change in place before that. So now the commission's taking over these events, and you have volunteers that are making decisions and allocations on spending. And there might not be, um. It looked at, if it was looked at, at a, a department umbrella, I think that that is important to look at. I also think it's important to determine how, when Four Richmond is built out, and we are very excited about that. We're gonna have a pavilion, we're gonna have all these things, and who is gonna manage that? So bridging that gap over time with what the town administrator proposed is gonna be a little increase. At a time because we have the funds, and then when Four Richmond Townhouse comes to fruition, now we know it's probably gonna be sooner than later. On some of those things, who's going to be managing, um, renting out the pavilion for sale? Did that in West Greenwich, and, um, it is a very popular thing for birthday parties, weddings, events. And, um, you know, if we have a summer concert series, and the rec commission wants to do that, who's gonna be managing those things? And right now, there is no one really in place to do that. At all, so back to the expenses, we are, I think we're gonna be pretty close to having no. We have no budget in the rec commission side for events.
Right.
And we've been out of money since January, February, after the tree lighting, so we can't do anything till July. But we're gonna put on the Easter egg hunt and the, uh, the fishing derby. In addition.
No, but four, cause, but they're gonna sold from the rec. Which makes sense, yeah, that's your question.
It does, and I think just, it, it gives more, um, reasons to the idea that we discussed earlier, when and if we decide as a council. To have this overarching community, I think they'll have much more oversight of the budget, the allocations, and, and it'll be more homogenized, so that's good, okay.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, cause I, I meant to bring that up, the whole across the street, who's gonna manage that? It's, it's a lot, Erin can tell you from West Greenwich, it's a big undertaking, and, um. You're also gonna have revenue to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know.
New revenue line.
What extra you may spend on that director may be seen in revenue.
Cool, thank you.
Awesome, that answered your questions on this page, oh, Erin, you have more?
I have one more thing.
Yeah, go for it.
So the other thing to look at is currently, there's nobody here in this building that answers any questions or handles any of the summer camp registrations, the payments. And so, um, what had happened is, um, because the previous director didn't have an office here. And it was a stipend position, and so when parents are registering for camp, they're registering, do I have to give a check now? Well, I'm not sure, so finance handles the money, so they come to me and ask the questions, well, what? Well, I'm not sure, so finance handles the money, so they come to me and ask the questions, well, when's the schedule coming out? Well, I'm not sure, you can email the director, and people got very frustrated. Can I get a receipt for my HSA reimbursement? I'm not sure, you have to email. So, um, a lot of the logistical operations of summer camp is being relied on on several other offices. And right now, we don't have a rec director. Summer camp has been advertised, people are wanting to make sure they get the early bird discount and they're registering for camp. So right now, we're taking them in and stamping them, cause there's nobody on the backend eventually that is gonna process that. So while it's not an everyday thing, the summer camp is not everyday thing, but that is just one element that is really being managed by several other departments in town hall.
Makes sense to me.
And just to expand a little bit more, um, we did advertise, we interviewed one person. That person wasn't int- we, we explained to that person that there was the potential that this position could change from what was advertised to more of just a summer camp director position and that person really wasn't interested in that. Which means I need to advertise again for just a summer camp, well, assuming you bless the idea. And I would need to advertise for a summer camp director, but obviously, I didn't need to do that like yesterday. Um, so just to bring that, you know, concern to your attention, because people are paying for summer camp, but we don't have a director yet.
Yeah. Okay, um, did you have other questions on this page? Nope. Dan, did we get to your questions on this page?
No, yeah. They're, they're, they're pretty minor.
All right.
All right, line code twenty-two point five two six oh, which is the Rhode Island Parks dues. You've had it in the budget for a number of years, we haven't paid it, but why do we have it in the budget? Was it four? Only fifty dollars.
Sorry, what line do you want?
Dues for Recreation and Rhode Island Parks Recreation Association?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I don't know, but maybe a new person would want to sign up for that. I'm not sure who would have ever signed up for that.
I think we just remove it.
And if it's fifty dollars at all.
I'm okay with removing it.
Yeah, we don't need it.
Yeah, anybody else say no, or hold your peace? Sorry, it's removed.
And the next one is more of a safety occupational issue.
What line?
Yeah, I'm gonna get down to tw- um, twenty-three point five three three five, which is the bottled water in the transfer station. Do we, do, do they not have the ability to get water there?
It's for drinking water, just like this bubbling right here. It's that kind of water, it's bubbling.
Right, do they, do they need it?
I think he's asking us to tap water now, please.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if there's anything wrong with it, but I'm just suggesting maybe that's why it's been done for.
It's like this one here?
Mm-hmm.
So somebody who's on the road could come and fill and go too. They're not necessarily there all the time.
Okay.
All right, any others on this page?
Where's it located?
Where's what located?
Where's the bottled water machine, you mean? Cause the.
Through the door to the left. Yeah. Any more on this page? All right, um, to twenty-one, anybody have something on twenty-one?
Yes.
All right, take it away, Dan.
All right, line code twenty-four point five two eight five, so this is park extinguishers, miscellaneous supplies, rekey of town doors. Um, it looks like we keep spending all of it, just kind of curious what we actually spend, because it looks like for this year, we're gonna be way over budget. We're already at six grand out of the five grand that's allocated. Every year, we've been over five grand.
Does building maintenance?
No.
Is that a, something you could pull up now or is it something to?
Like you're pro.
Send over?
Well, the biggest. So, repair.
Five two eight five.
Temporary repair for, from valley heating and cooling. Actually.
Bless you. Did that sneak up on you?
Yeah, it did.
Apologies.
Replace, uh, condenser pump and line repair. Diagnostic charge and capacitor, site glass and bolts, and then furnace nozzle line for seven hundred dollars, burn, burner motor, oil nozzle, um.
I know where I'm gonna go. Sounds like repairs to a boiler.
All right, what would you?
So I, I foresee a, an agenda item coming up where we're gonna discuss replacement for our furnaces. So. So question is, how, how much are we gonna spend if we replace them?
We're already at eight thousand nine hundred. Another count.
For this year.
Yep.
Yeah, and then the other, on the other hand, seems like we have underpredicted this every year.
Yeah.
It was, uh, EPW.
Yeah. I, I would say leave it where it is personally, just because that's what they're requesting, that's what they think they need. We'll get a new boiler, but there may be other things that now they're like, oh, great, new boiler, now we're gonna keep repairing whatever else they have.
Again, part of it is also making sure we allocate enough money.
For sure.
That we don't end up in a position where you can't fix something.
Yeah. All right, what else we on this page?
Well, you might wanna bump it up to six.
Is it, is it possible to just kind of get a summary over the last three years, like what we fixed in that line code? Maybe so we can predict if five grand is gonna be enough?
Yeah, I can send it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, for the most part, it's air conditioning.
Air conditioners?
Yeah, there's five separate units here.
Mm-hmm.
Repair and lights, switches with the boiler.
And. And.
Different zones for add-ons for air conditioner, sorry. Just trying to make sure it's projected.
Sorry, so I do, a lot of the costs are prob- are probably from valley heating, because last summer we had several repairs to our AC units, and I think we have either four or five different units in town hall, though they're not, they're not window units or mini splits. But because of how the town hall is built with the unique cut-up about it, they're all separate units and then they were added on over time. So sometimes when, um, a unit goes out because they're old, the other units are overworking and then those go out, so they have to be repaired and frozen, and we had that, um, a lot last summer.
They're not central air systems, are they?
Yeah, it is, but there's a bunch of different zones.
All right.
Last, last question is a big one. We have Department twenty-five, which is community services.
Yeah.
How do we decide which community service we provide money to and how much money is appropriate?
So.
There's, this is a lot of money.
The finance board spends a ton of time on this. Um, we do get, um, applications from every organization. Um, obviously, the major ones are Hook Valley Ambulance, Clark Library, um, those are really the two big ones. Um, most of the other organizations request increases every year and for the most part, the finance board holds fast on prior years. Um, some of it, like the library, there's what's called maintenance of effort, where if you go below a certain number, they lose their state funding. Um, and then I think ambulance is just one that people feel strongly that the town should support.
Makes sense.
I have the applications for every organization. If there's anything in particular, I'm happy to forward those along.
Yeah, is that what you wanted to do? You wanted to see the applications that were submitted?
I don't think I need to do that. I mean, a lot of these have been approved in budgets for years.
Yeah.
And someone decided that they were worthwhile investments in our community. I wanna trust that judgment. I mean, a lot of these, I know what they are.
Mm-hmm.
Figured, you know.
Just wanna learn a little bit more about the process.
About it, yeah, the process. How we decide to, to spend our money.
Yeah, I think the finance board does spend a lot of, the, the meetings I've been to have always been talking about that, a lot of that and reviewing the applications. Like, my first year on council, I was like, oh, I wanna see them, and I was like, I don't need to see these. Um, so yeah, that all you have on this page, and I'll go to Joe?
Can I ask what?
Yeah, go for it. I think that was your last one, go for it.
I just wanted to know, I don't wanna touch a belief, my, my son loves it, the, the library, just what do they spend their money on?
I'd have.
I don't think we see that.
I mean, it's a place, it's, it's a place where books, people come in, they have a book and the person at the desk, so I don't know what.
I think that might be a question for the library, right? Like, what their budgeting is, um.
Well, it's probably, actually, they did a pretty good, um, community, didn't they, Karen?
Yeah, I'm actually looking real quick at their.
I don't know about this library, but mine in West Greenwich, we've switched a lot to digital stuff and that costs more money. They do events for people that cost money to people.
Are supposed to get a amount of events, like overnight and all that good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
That adds up.
Gingerbread house making.
Mm-hmm. Um, is that quick to pull up? Should we move on to the next page? I just wanna, I am being cautious of the time, but also all the questions. We'll come back to that when we get to have that. Um, is all, everyone all set with this page? All right, so we are on to twenty-two, we're on page twenty-two, which is Department twenty-six. One of the senior activities, um.
Yes.
What, yeah, you have, I have one on this too, um, I'll, I'll let you go for it.
I got a couple, maybe you should go through yours first.
I just have one, um, it's along the same lines of what you've been saying is, um, line number one point twenty-six point five three nine one, program expenses. I want to fund their activities, but if they're using, you know, nine thousand, six thousand, this year so far, three thousand, we've been funding them appropriately and I don't know if there's new plans as to why they're asking for two thousand dollars more. But I'm happy to give it to them, I was just curious if there's more initiatives that they're doing.
I think he wanted to do, I think he was only doing two mystery lunch trips.
Okay.
And I think he wanted to do more of those.
Awesome.
And I think it's the same amount of classes.
Okay, happy to keep it where it is, just curious. Anybody else got questions on this or we'll go to Dan? All right, take it away, Dan.
Yeah, that was one of them, you know, um, five two oh five, it's the second line down, miscellaneous supplies, says four chairs. So we've provided five hundred dollars each year, they're not spending it, and then they're asking for eleven hundred, so I, I'd like to know what they want.
He wants to buy four new chairs. It's for, for new chairs. That's what he's asking.
That four new chairs is in a note from every year. It's, this is the year for new chair.
Oh, year for new chair.
Okay.
What kind of chairs are eleven hundred bucks?
What are these?
Kind of chairs?
Office chairs, like these kinds of chairs.
Yeah, the regular office chairs.
For what? The seniors?
For his office, yeah, um, I don't think it's just for him, no.
We weren't taking public comment today.
I don't think it's just for himself, I think, um, he has people that come in and help him in the office now.
Well, so we wanna spend that amount of money on somebody that comes in?
Yeah, well, if we're gonna be combining this position, I would say that we don't allocate this money because that position's gonna go away, so I don't need office chairs for a position that won't exist.
Well, just positions will still exist. It'll just be. Supervised.
Under a just, yeah.
By.
But it's, won't a stipend go away?
No.
So why are we gonna create a new position, still have someone directing, senior sitting at the new position do that as well?
Well, she's gonna be doing all the human service work and half of rec work.
Yeah.
In addition to overseeing all three.
In the same vein that we would be paying the person who's running summer camp as the rec director, like, we're paying that person.
Oh.
Yeah.
Some levels, manager supervisor.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I think the only, yeah, that, that's the logic.
All right, so what do you wanna do about the chairs?
I don't wanna see what chairs he's asking for.
All right, so we will parking lot that and ask for the chairs. Um.
You, you obviously have employed office chair.
No, I guess, no.
What else we got?
Um, all right, so obviously, we're getting into the boards commissions now, so move down to economic development. We have allocated money to them every year, it has not been spent. Chamber of Commerce dues, it doesn't look like they paid them in fiscal year twenty-four, don't see it for this year. Do we even get anything of value being a member of the chamber?
Um, a couple of years ago, I suggested we stop paying it because the members of the EDC at that time were debating whether or not to be part of the ocean community or the, um, uh, Southern Rhode Island, is it South County? South County Chamber of Commerce, and so I was like, all right, let's remove these dues. And then when they decide what they want, we'll pick one of the two or be a part of both, and we haven't heard from them since, so that's actually not for dues. Uh, that might be an old note.
It's been very controversial every year, it's been like, do we or don't we join the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, that's the question I asked, was like, who's going to these meetings? Is anybody getting value? And nobody was really going, and it's like, I like to go to those events, but I go under my, my company, my company's dues, not the town's dues, so, I don't know. Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so, um, I was on the EDC in the past and I know that, um, we had been, uh, associated with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, it's based in Westerly, and we're paying the dues and I think, you know, they do a lot of work, but like, that Chamber of Commerce does a ton of work for Westerly, it's actually paid for by Westerly, so I think that was one of the things they felt they weren't getting as much return on the investment. But the other piece about this, and I think this is one of the things that hampers Economic Development Commission, is that that line item, um, five three five one, which has a thousand dollars on it, is specifically allocated to marketing and promotions, so they've tried to look at using that for other activities and they can't because it's allocated there, so a modification of the description of line, it'll make it the more flexibility of what they actually do with whatever money we allocate them.
That's gonna be my next point, so I'm glad you brought that up.
So what if we just, yeah, just switched it to, um, not be so specific?
Right, and you might be able to reduce this to their overall, if you're, if we're allocating them sixteen hundred dollars, let's say we gave them fifteen hundred dollars and just combined it so that they have the flexibility to, if they chose to do dues, I don't know if we have to have specificity there, but just give them some flexibility to do what they want with the money that we allocate them.
Yeah, that's what I would wanna do. I agree.
So reduce it to like fifteen hundred or?
Yeah, fifteen hundred total and retitle the activity?
Yeah, cause I think what you're gonna see too with, um, task force activities, we're really, we've got a, a, a growing and robust Economic Development Commission. I'd hate to hamper them now that they're coming together, like, like taking entire budget away, so I think they could do good work with fifteen hundred, we give them flexibility to do what they need.
Yeah, we have a lot of new members.
Yeah.
So that'd be good. Um, I think it would just be like a general, a general initiatives, kind of, is that possible for a commission or do you need something more specific?
Media activities and promotions?
Well, program expenses.
Program, right?
Okay.
Sounds like a legal term.
Um, I mean, that's what, that's what they all say, program expenses.
A lot of education. Yep. Yeah.
Yes, I don't know if you wanna go back yet or not, but I do have the answer to your question.
Oh, yeah.
Clark Library, so they're under income, um, they've got grants that get, uh, Rhode Island Grant in Aid for thirty-two thousand and they've got our money, um. They've got money that comes in from the community room, I don't know if you care so much about income as you do as expenses, I'll just give you expenses, payroll of a hundred and five thousand, payroll taxes, Medicare, blah, blah, all that, um, library materials, books, audios, videos, ebooks, periodicals, um, then library operations, library supplies, mileage, uh, journals, postage, special programs, story hour, um, fundraising, candy bars, miscellaneous annual appeal, um, administrative expenses, insurance, miscellaneous, um, oh, maintenance, fire extinguishers, equipment supplies, alarm contract, janitorial, landscaping, pest control, rubbish, no removal, um, Ocean State Library membership, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Oh, wow.
Nice.
Um.
That answered your.
And utilities, that adds up to like a hundred and eighty-six change thousand.
Wow, that answered your question?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you for looking that up.
Thank you.
Um, go back on to page twenty-two, we talked about, we're on to answer questions, right?
Yeah, the last one had same thing on apartment, program expenses for the dog park, allocated six hundred, they haven't spent it. Do you know what they want to use it for?
Um, would, yeah, dog parks, bags is what that's for, um, when I was on the committee, I was the first that, like, added this to the budget, the year that we, like, created our expenses was the year that, uh, one of our volunteers rebuilt the picnic table. The picnic table's starting to go out, um, but also with the park nearing completion, I think that the dog park should be considering what their next initiative is. You know, they were created to fundraise and that's what the resolution's for, fundraising doesn't need to happen anymore. So they may be redoing what they actually, what their purpose is and becoming more of like a maintenance, like, one of the volunteers last meeting had said, are we gonna throw lime down every year? Or is that EPW? Or is that DPW? So um, they may be responsible for some of that ongoing maintenance work to the park. So. I hope that answers your question. If not, we can parking lot it for more from them. Um, any other ones on that line? For this page? Alright, on to the twenty-three. Anybody got anything on page twenty-three, which is like department thirty, thirty-one? Alright. Oh, now we're cooking with gas. Oh, posted notes. Alright, department thirty-two. We'll go to Jim.
I heard that. I heard that.
Mark said, oh, John.
I can always gasp to get the number of sticky notes.
No, 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 it's, it's, no, it's not that. It's just, uh, no, no, this comes back to, um, that the, or, um, the transfer and recycling landfill was a post that was on the town page this past week about, um, recycling and fines. And it just did some investigation into it, um, for your information, um, you know, so the fines that we get from the landfill are if one of the, and, and if Gary or Cody are listening to this right now, I'm hoping I'm saying this correctly. So we have these fifty foot, um, uh, or fifty yard bins, the dumpsters. There's three right now. There'll be two. And those are filled by residents go into the landfill and putting stuff into the hopefully correct bin. Or RPE who collects. So, for example, I don't have RPE. I have CPW, which is easy. Yeah, CPM. They do not, um, they do not, um, dump there. They go elsewhere. So recycling and trash is going to our, uh, transfer station. It's just RPE and local residents. Um, or anyone who has a sticker. Now, um, the, the problem is it in that if someone puts something that is not appropriate for cycling, like if they put their metal in a plastic bag and throw it in there, where somebody on the RPE route does that, and the state sees that, they, um, they essentially condemn the entire load, and they fine us two hundred and fifty dollars a ton. And guess what they do with that load of truck? They take it up to the top of the hill and it's dumped into the regular trash. Um, so that's, that's kinda crazy. And again, there's, it's very subjective. I mean, the state could say, oh, I see that two hundred and fifty dollar charge, and we've had three of those fines in the last month. So three in the last month. So you're looking at potentially six thousand dollars a year in fines. The, the challenge I had was I could not find anywhere where those fines are hitting our budget. They're not under, they're not listed under the fines on page thirty-three.
They would be coming from the, uh, re-class recovery bills.
So the tipping fee line?
That's what they are. That's what, that's what the fine is. It's, it's to pay to have it disposed of as garbage.
Yep.
So is that on page thirty-three?
Tipping fees.
No, it should be on that page fifty-three, one, nine, line code.
Yeah, Central landfill tipping fees, page twenty-four. Right in the middle. It's, uh, fifty, yep, fifty-three, nineteen.
Fifty-three night.
Department thirty-two.
Fifty-three, nineteen, yep. So, for example, what did we, what have we paid so far this year? So there's no, the tipping fee is separate from the fine though. The fine should be.
It would come on the same bill because we couldn't find the fines. It was as gentle for the fines, which actually should still. But.
You can see my, my frustration is we need to have some control over that because it's a, it's a free-for-all, and I mean, it's the best money-making scheme I've ever heard in my life.
Well, we, we have no control over it though. It comes on the bill and we can't deny it.
Right.
I know, Jim.
At the end of the day, like, if they're taking our recycling, that recycling they say is bad and they put into the landfill. And why are we recycling? I mean, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say like, I mean.
And who's checking to make sure that it's actually, cuz like you said, it is a little subjective. From what I've learned at seminars put on by our Conservation Commission, is that it's a, it's a ten percent like load. So if they look at the load and say, oh, about ten percent of that's wrong.
Yeah, and they're doing every municipality in the state. It's, it's subjective. So it's, it's, there's, we, we gotta get some kind of, I don't know how, but my fear is that a lot of the money that's in that tipping fee, we're getting hit with these fines and you know, if we're looking at six thousand dollars a year, we could save something there. So we have no visibility on it.
We're at sixty-five thousand. Sixty-five thousand in tipping fees.
Sixty-five thousand in tipping fees, but we don't know of that, what might be fines.
No.
Do we know what, which one? Was it, it was just the recycling? It wasn't metal piles, just standard recycling bins?
I don't think it tells you.
Metal will be different.
Cuz I was thinking that. What if you just, we do a commingled. You could say, this one's paper, this one's plastic, this one's glass, and then you know place locally where we have junk in there that shouldn't be.
Can we require them to, uh, parse that out into line on them of what's tipping fee and what's a fine?
I guess so.
And if not, that's a state law that needs to change.
There is supposed to be something involving. This was just on the news, right? Isn't this, this is not in my brain. This
It's mad.
Was somewhere. They're supposed to make it so that you can't, um, they can't kick back the whole load. They're only got, they're gonna, they have to take a portion of it. You know, push off the whatever.
Again, and maybe my understanding is that if, if something is wrong in that load, the entire load gets dumped into the landfill. And, um, yeah, so that, it's just that it's a little loose, you know what I mean? Um, I, I'd like to have, is there anyone who can find out more about that?
Yeah, I can look into it, but you're right. If, if it then gets dumped into the landfill and we are not exceeding our cap, it seems we, we're weird, right, that we're, we're paying more? And, and what kind of incentive is it? To recycle? There's, there, there should be an incentive to recycle, but.
But the incentive is if you drive to the transfer station, it's free. That, that's what I think the incentive would be. Versus like when you pay by the bag.
But that's the catch. So with the transfer station, people will just throw their trash recycling cuz they don't wanna pay per pound fee.
So, so it may be a more awareness and policing of it, not policing. Exactly, I know. I heard you stutter and slow down saying it.
We have should just be standing in front of the recycling.
Yeah, but there's.
But they're actually like, but then they're, they're down the hill doing.
Have a couple small ones. Can you get a big one? Or is that because it's gotta go on? That's how it goes to Johnston.
It's happened three times in the last month. Is it, has that been consistent?
I don't know. That's just what I gleaned from my conversation with Cody on this.
The impression that I get when I go to league meetings is that this is a news.
Yeah.
That all of a sudden the, the resource recovery is cracking down on this.
Okay.
Question is. Record that. Gotta pay for the bridge.
So that's something we'll have to find a solution to at a future date.
Yeah.
Give any other questions on the budget?
Uh, no, I just, if we could look into that.
Yeah.
Just it's a, it's a potential hole.
For sure.
Thank you.
Um, any else got questions on this page? Dan?
Okay, um, line code thirty-two, five, three, three, one, the well water testing. Where is a well over there that we're testing?
Where are you? Um, I think that's required by state law in, um, public buildings. If, if you're on well water that you're, you're required to do, um, testing. And so that's done by our.
Okay, so it just happens to be about the transfer station.
Oh, well, that's different.
Yeah, a landfill well monitor.
Okay, that's different.
Yeah.
There's two different things. There's two different types of well monitoring. There's public water well monitoring, and then there's.
The cap that they're testing?
There's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, what else we got on this one?
Alright, I'll, I'll go with the easy one, and I'll go to the hard one first. So, uh, sorry, I'll go to the hard one second. The line code thirty-two point five, three, seven, eight, which is equipment maintenance. So in fiscal year twenty-four, we allocated forty-three K. Spent eleven. And then this past year, we allocated thirty K, so it was a big drop. They were up to about six grand. You know where they're at? So far, Danielle?
Five thousand eight hundred ninety.
Yeah.
Didn't the scales just break? Or be out of maintenance, out of work for a while? Oh, okay.
No, we did have a problem with the scale. It was a long time. It was a while ago.
It was a while ago?
Yeah.
I was thinking of the compactor.
Two-part tickets. Uh, well, that was easy. A semi-annual test of scales. That's three thousand dollars. Fues and stone for Hillsdale Road and cement, cement blocks for the transfer station. Sixteen hundred for cement blocks.
Is that under equipment maintenance? Yeah, that's weird. Five, three, seven, eight?
Yeah, that was seven.
That should go back.
Well, it's for a transfer station.
Probably should have went on miscellaneous, but there is no budget in it. Like, put it somewhere.
Yeah.
Ah.
Yeah, there's not much. There aren't many options.
Right? So what do you wanna do with this one? Do you think it should be your dues? Or do you think we're making sure the maintenance is happening?
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're paying to have equipment maintenance, I wanna make sure we're maintaining our equipment the properly. But the last two years, we're not even close to spending the money that's been allocated. So I have the seventy-three thousand dollars allocated, we're, we're only spending seventeen thousand. Mark has something to say.
Yeah.
Oh, I just remember Gary was here the other meeting. You asked him what's going on at the transfer station. He had some things that they were gonna do to the building and some other stuff, so I thinking that that's gonna come out of this thirty thousand dollars.
Can we ask Gary for that information? For next week?
Just, just for clarity, um, if you're gonna ask him that, maybe he should be allocating something, whether it's under construction or miscellaneous and removing it from
Yeah.
maintenance, so that just so we know what we're spending it on.
Yeah, if he needs miscellaneous, we'll get a miscellaneous.
Yeah, so I'd move it there. If he said we need it, then put it there.
So we'll parking lot that one for Gary as well.
Yeah.
Um.
Needs a new line code maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What else we got on this one?
Alright, this is, this is kind of overarching, like how our refuse collection works. So we, we have the transfer station. People can come and they pay per pound for trash. Cycling's free. Seems like RPE comes and dumps their refuse at our transfer station. But what about the other haulers? What do they do with their material?
But is that, oh, my limited knowledge on that is that.
Does anyone know?
What?
Like what? What do other companies do? Like?
Wesley. They go to Wesley, okay. So, does the town charge RPE per ton that they drop off? That we then bring to round research?
I would assume so. Yeah, why? Yeah.
Does our, does our evening bring trash to our transfer station or just recycle?
I think the haulers bring directly, and that's why we have an ordinance to license haulers to make sure that our, we're getting credit for the tipping fee. Cause to ma- ensure that the tipping fees for Richmond, for all these haulers, for say, go to, you know, collect for five communities, and they're not saying that the trash from Westerly and Exeter or whatever is Richmond, and then that reduces our cap. So that's why we have an ordinance, so I think it's going directly, but I don't know if the recyclables go directly to our transfer station. That I don't know.
Well, they must, cuz Jim said RPE drops cycling, and I think that's probably it, cuz there's no cost for that, so we don't worry about.
Right.
We get the credit.
We just get the fine if it's not correct.
For the credit. She was trying to be a little more positive. Alright, so does that answer your question?
No, no, that's just the start of it. Mark's gonna kick me on the table. Okay, so our, our our fees per tonnage that people are charged, whether they go on the scale where they crap that, and it's on a little scale. That, does that cover the expenses to haul the material to and dump it at the landfill, Johnson? Is it revenue neutral? Or is there all this expense to the town that's not covered in fees? And then one of the reasons I'm asking is the fee for hauling and refuges. Budget went up considerably from twenty-four, went up like thirty grand.
User fees, transfer station fees is, uh, three hundred thousand.
Yep.
This department is, looks like it's over for a total, when a total transfer cycling, and that's just, or is it just operations? What am I, sorry, Danielle, I should let you answer that question.
The whole thing. So it would be four oh one. It's budgeted for this year for four oh one, if that's what you were looking at. That would be total for transfer station.
What do we got?
More recycling and landfill.
Just kind, you know, this overarching part of waste, you know, we don't provide trash pickup. We, we provide a transfer station, and yes, we charge a fee, but people should get something for their tax dollars. So that's, it wouldn't have to be revenue neutral based upon the user fees. It's, it's a service that we provide to the residents. And so, you know, I think it's fine for the overall tax base to subsidize it to some extent. It's, it's, again, what, what are your government services? One of them is we offer a transfer station. You've gotta pay to get rid of your garbage and other, you know, set things, but I don't think we should look at it as the user fees have to cover all the expenses of the transfer.
I'll try and ask him the question. I, I wanna know.
About a hundred thousand different. We pay about a hundred thousand more than what we would receive.
Alright.
Cuz the revenue's three hundred thousand, and the department is around four, uh, four hundred.
Just, since, since it's not on agenda item, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hypothetically, if we reduce the amount of trash that we are bringing to the landfill, will that save the town money?
Yeah.
We, we do not have a composting. And a lot of the trash is compostable material. I think that that might be something to consider while we're in this workshop.
Right, but if we reduce the amount of trash that people are bringing to the transfer station, we're then reducing the amount of tipping fees that people are paying. So.
So both reduce.
But you're still saving residents money. Cuz they're not paying.
Well, right, right, right. So they're gonna pay less per pound. I mean, you could do that in backyard too. But, just saying. But for those who maybe don't want it or can't, or whatever, that's a, something we could definitely look into.
We are getting ready to start composting like Russian.
Right.
They're composting or we taking it to the?
No, we're actually gonna take it to Resource Recovery. Thanks, um, let me look at the email. I got an email from Gary today, or from Cody.
That is. An operation where like residents bring there? Their, their leaves and yard waste.
That's exactly what it is.
And grass? No, I think it's.
Why specifically grass?
I think it's absurd. We don't pick up yard waste. We don't accept it.
We also have seen an increase in users of the transfer stations since Westerly stopped allowing residents. So we've seen a lot of
Really stuff.
Richmond residents, Hockington residents, a lot of residents.
It's a ten dollar day pass fee.
A couple of years ago, West, uh, Hockington stopped going to Westerly, and we took on all of those.
I worked the.
I know, I'm surprised.
The time, they come in all the time. We just charge them a ten dollar fee to come in. They can drop their recyclers off for free.
Interesting.
They can drop their trash?
They have to buy bags. That's what we do. We have orange bags that you have to put in the trash and forget, but they, they, they would have to pay for trash. They came in with like black bags, you have to pay. Unless they wanted to buy the bags that we, we supply.
Even if they didn't have a sticker, Westerly.
Yeah, you just, just a ten dollar day pass.
Because we had a, we have a significant amount of increased transfer stations for Richmond and Hockington. More, I would say, last summer into spring.
It'd be, it'd be gas prices. I mean, it's a thirty minute drive. I don't know.
Depending on what side you're on, yeah.
I was told by everybody that Westerly stopped allowing non-residents to use it.
Interesting.
Just letting them in.
Your boss is rocking on YouTube right now.
So we got an email from Resource Recovery saying, uh, per our policy, we notify municipalities when there is finished compost available, free of charge to those municipalities that deliver, also leave leaf and yard waste to Resource Recovery, and now is that time. There's a pool of a thousand cubic yards available to share amongst the eligible municipalities first come, first served, blah, blah. Cody responds to her and says, Town of Richmond would like to contribute to the compost program. And she replies, we would need to deliver the yard and leaf debris to Resource Recovery to receive free compost when it's available. Have the hauler bring the leaf and yard debris here. You qualify for free compost. Richmond can bring up to two hundred and one tons of leaf and yard waste per fiscal year for under the cap price of, of zero dollars. Once you go over the cap, the town would then pay the over the cap price of twenty-five dollars a ton with a twenty-five dollar minimum.
Does that answer all the questions we have about the transfer station?
On this page, yes.
Okay. Um, that's the end of that. So on to page twenty-five. Anybody have questions? Page twenty-five. Alright, we'll go over to Dan. Alright, we'll go over to Dan.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, um, line code thirty-five point five thousand two, the deputy stipends for emergency management. So we, and this might just be when it was allocated. The fiscal year twenty-four adopted was two grand. It wasn't spent fiscal year twenty-four. We allocate another two grand in fiscal year twenty-five, and currently it's at three thousand.
It was, yes. He wasn't paid for that fiscal year, so they paid him.
The next year, search Carrie over.
Yep, that's it.
Alright, next page. Twenty-six. Anybody? Alright, nobody. Okay, yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Same thing, um, line code thirty-five point five two oh two, the miscellaneous supplies. Everything from office supplies, emergency supplies, equipment. We've allocated three hundred dollars each year and it hasn't been spent. So do we keep allocating three hundred dollars if it's not being used at a certain point?
Emergency management?
Uh, we have a new person. I don't know what Nick will do. I don't know if it was something Randy just didn't buy things or if any, I don't know.
Well, and this could fall under if he had, we have an emergency and we need to buy bottled water or that we don't get donated. Might need it. So it's, it's a, it seems to me it's dependent upon what, what may or may not happen. So I think you need to have it distinctated. It's only three hundred dollars, so.
That makes sense to me to keep in.
Where do they, where, where do they work out of?
Where do they work out of?
Every person, yeah.
Um, I don't know. I'm not sure. That is a good question.
An emergency operations center at the, um, DPW.
Yeah.
I mean, generally they work from home, cause it's not like it's a full-time job or there's no set hour. But if there's like a snowstorm or whatever, they go and they assist with dispatch and whatnot.
Awesome. So that's it for twenty-six or well, yeah.
How do we determine what an appropriate amount is for contingency? They're like a percentage that's like, kind of mandated, or we just kinda guess?
And I guess, over time, if it seems like we use it or we don't, it's important to have it.
Yeah, not questioning that at all. I was curious how we determine.
Is that for all the contingencies? I'm assuming in one you're asking that question.
Yeah.
Alright, good.
Yeah, I mean, healthcare contingency is important because if you have, um, an employee that has a life change.
Right.
And they take on healthcare or, you know, a family member, you wanna make sure you've got enough allocated so you can pay it.
So on to page twenty-seven.
While we're talking about contingency, I don't know if we wanna discuss wage increases and, um, it's always survey that
Yeah.
League is doing and how we wanna handle that.
Yeah, that'll cover what was later on the agenda, um, that I had added, was the wage report, which I think was discussed during my prior council. We were gonna do wage study. You just kinda alluded to, yeah. I was gonna wait till, till nine then off, or I mean, not nine, eight then off a break.
And make a mo- motion that we take a re- ten minute recess.
Ten minutes.
Until eight o'clock.
Second.
I go to five, guys. Five minutes, inhale, chow. Yeah. Alright, let's go to the meeting. Roll the vote. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Thank you.
Sorry, Karen, you guys cut off.
Gives you more time to prepare.
That answers my question I was about to ask if we were live. So we are back motion to return from recess.
Moved.
And our motion. I'll second it. All in favor.
Right.
Thank you. So where we left off Karen, you were discussing the wage report or I was shifting it already to discuss.
Yes.
Before we do that, though, we did kind of discuss a little bit during the break, Mr. Zangari, would you like to go home? I don't know if we have questions for you. I don't want to make you hang out.
If I'm dismissed or relieved, I'm happy to do so. If not, I'm happy to stay. Up to you.
We like your company.
I appreciate.
We all don't like your bill.
I understand that. You have to make a motion for that?
No, I'm just welcoming him to.
No, it's completely up to you.
Does anybody think they'll have questions for him? For the budget? No, and if not, we can parking lot him for you. Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay.
Enjoy the rest of your sleep.
Sorry. We'll be soon. We appreciate your service. I think we'll see you on Tuesday, right?
Yes, you will.
Yeah. All right, Karen, now you can take it away.
I just wanted to point out that there is an overall three percent increase in wages across the board for non-employees. You do have a line here for contingency which covers if contract negotiations goes differently than we plan. If someone comes on board that for whatever reason we have to pay more. But I also wanted to point out the fact that there's been some discussion about whether we're paying competitive wages. And we've been waiting on a wage study from the League of Cities and Towns. So I just want to make sure we're putting an appropriate amount of money in the wage contingency. In case we want to make any changes after we see that.
Do you think you can tell us what's the percent of the wage contingency? Compared to the total salary for all of our employees who know that? So like, let's just throw numbers out there. If our total salaries are a hundred thousand dollars and our contingency is three percent. But then we get the wage study and we find that we're way underpaying, are we going to have enough to kind of at least get up to average? That we're somewhat competitive? I think the public should know that we have lost a lot of people over the last year.
Yeah.
The higher salaries.
Yeah.
We also got to consider though. Everybody else works forty hours a week.
Works thirty.
Five hundred and twenty hours extra that people work for that extra money.
Yep.
Our salaries are comparable to hourly rates. So it's not that somebody is being paid a forty hour work week, but only working thirty. Like the hourly rate for the forty hour per weekend at another municipality is still broken down as higher. The hourly rate for a thirty hour person. Does that make sense? Am I playing that well?
We break our thirty hours down to hourly and break their forty hours down to hourly before we compare.
But it's a trade off. I think what Jeff is saying, some people would give up ten hours of their week to get paid twenty, thirty thousand dollars more per year.
Yeah.
So it's really, you know.
Personal choice.
Personal choice.
So I guess we'll parking lot that question because I can't just be tallied up right now.
No.
And that'll be, that'll be a good one for for the next budget workout.
Should have made that clear. I didn't.
Contingency wages is thirty eight thousand seven hundred. If you kept that same amount in there, that's about one and a half percent of the regular wages.
Oh, how much? One and a half?
One and a half percent.
Do you have, do you have a sense of where we are?
In what?
In. Salary rates, like, does anyone just know, like, where does Richmond fall? Are we definitely lower? By how much? That's what I'm just thinking. Is the one and a half percent enough? So we need to discuss that more?
No, it's a it goes by range. I would say your DPW is, is lower than West Greenwich is. I know that. So.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, just you talk about the wage study. Is that going to address some of these questions?
Yeah.
And when will we have that?
We don't know the answer to that. That's why I think it has to go into contingency. So that we can do it even after the budget is passed.
Who's doing the wage study?
The League of Cities and Towns.
I'm just thinking out loud here. They know that all of the towns are working on their budgets right now and they're not going to have that done before all of us enter our budgets. Like it's a matter of weeks or months.
I can be quiet about it. A week and a half ago, they said they were waiting on a couple of stragglers. So I would like to think soon.
Yeah. I hope so.
If they're just waiting on a couple of stragglers, I wonder if those are stragglers that aren't comparable to our town anyway. What if they're waiting on the larger municipalities or like Newport or Providence versus like, if they're waiting on Little Compton, yeah, maybe we should wait and see, but like they're not.
I just don't know what format it's in.
I know. Ask them for a half report.
Yeah.
So we'll parking lot that one and move on to the next page of twenty seven. Anybody have questions on twenty seven? All right.
Now this, again, more confirmation of what I think I'm seeing here. So we retired a bond basically is the savings here. Danielle?
Yes.
That's an old one though.
Yeah, well, ten years.
Yeah, that's fiscal year twenty twenty four. That's two years old.
Right, so, but we don't retire another one until twenty twenty eight. Yep.
All right. Onto. Oh, you have another one. Sure, go for it.
Just one other question. The why the decreases for the twenty twenty four bonds? Is that because we were guessing what the principal interest would be and now we know what it is?
Now we know. Yeah, we had initiated the paperwork, but I, I signed it when I came on in May last year. So it wasn't when she did the budget, you know, in March, she didn't know what it was going to be. Or if we were even paying it last year, which we didn't, we didn't pay it till this year.
Right. But now we know. So it's going to be, once it's set, it's set.
Yep. Yeah, we have the schedule.
All right. So just to, just to clarify. If we had the same budget from fiscal year twenty four, paid off this bond, you're looking at savings of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Oh, plus, well, two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, sorry.
Because there was.
Okay. And then the savings from having the accurate numbers on the new bond, we're looking at about three hundred and ten thousand dollar decrease in expenses from
Yes.
last budget.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Onto page twenty eight. Anybody got questions on twenty eight?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to Dan.
Sorry.
You're good.
Same. Same questions about office supplies and we have Karen here to answer for us. So line, line codes fifty two hundred, fifty two fifty, which is notary renewal and then fifty two sixty, which is dues. So in some years we didn't pay any of these out. We're still requesting the same amount. Were they just carryovers?
So office supplies, I tend to steal, as Erin can tell you. So whether or not I need anything, I guess unless someone's going over significantly because I'm stealing, the answer would probably be no. You know, unless I buy, say, a chair or something, which then I suppose would be attributed directly to me, but you know, I go steal a ream of paper or a pad of paper or a couple of pens or whatever. I think you could probably bring that number down. I don't, I'm not aware of anything big I'm going to need.
Before we do, your notary renewal here on the line says two, two thousand nineteen. When's it actually expire now? Are you a notary? It's always good to have in town hall. I think every, and it's like sixty dollars a year. It's not expensive. Eighty. I have a reading on.
Often Erin can't notarize certain things if it's like a probate issue or something that's going to come back to her office. So she'll have to refer them to either me or to Marcy.
Okay, so it's every four years. That was in twenty twenty three. So we're okay with removing that for now.
Right to four hundred dollars?
Right, well, yeah.
And all my clerks' notary fees are free.
So my correct understanding of this category for Department forty four, we're removing the office supplies at one fifty and the notary fee of four hundred, so a hundred, five hundred fifty dollars. Is that correct?
I believe so because I want to keep the dues.
You have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's not the, it's not the overall league, but it's the yeah, City and Town Managers Association.
What do you?
Red Island Municipal. I forget what the acronyms even are, but.
Yeah. What do you got to say, Mark?
I was going to say, you know, we keep, if we keep eliminating and reducing these individual office lines, it's not going to make up the overage that we have in the general office line. So.
And when you, when the next time comes and you have to put them back in, that's a hassle.
Right. So I'm just, you know.
Good to keep some fluctuation.
Keep the line open, but.
You don't want to.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I would just keep it. It's going to offset the overage in spending on the general line. Like Karen said, I steal.
And we were eighteen hundred dollars in over last year. I wonder how much we could.
So leave the one fifty for office supplies, but get rid of the four hundred for the notary. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. So leave the one fifty, get rid of the.
I mean, it wasn't just notary, it was also training, but I, most of what's available is free.
Okay.
So I don't foresee any training that's going to have an expense.
All right. So it sounds like then the consensus is to keep the one fifty and remove four hundred.
Yeah, because we don't want Karen stealing.
I think the other thing you have to know is that, you know, anything at the end of the year that's not spent. It's not like it vanishes into thin air. Like this year, you're using that
Right.
part of this budget so that you don't have an increase.
Right.
Or at least in this iteration, you don't have an increase. So if you have nothing you put into fund balance, then you're going to be increasing taxes in the future year.
I think the Mark's point, Danielle, what we talked about earlier, it'd be nice to have the spending on the correct line item. So we're not having overage in the general one. Because it's not being allocated to the right line items.
If we need to shift this over there, that's fine too, because I can see your point.
It's, it's just the way that they're, they're allocating it now. I know at the end of the day, it doesn't matter.
Right. And my, my, my point is going to be, there are so many hours in the day. And they've got enough on their plate to not worry about whether they're allocating that ream of paper. And, you know, it's just, something's going to give and that's what's giving. If you want to hire additional clerk who's going to accurately peg every, you know, box of paper clips to the appropriate department, you can do that, but it's, 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 at some point, you've got to say, at the end of the day, the supply ends up being a wash between what we, what we're under in department lines and what we're over in the general line. It's a wash and I understand your desire for precision and I, I get that, but you, we don't have, if we had unlimited personnel budget and we could have people assigned to do those things, we can't, but you know, if, if it's, we're lean when it comes to personnel. People have a lot of things they need to do and so it's that, that's what, you know, that's where the, you know, give and take is. That's my only point.
There's bigger areas where we can save. I just was, I thought I heard that there wasn't a need, but yeah, I'm trying to, I think let's have the money for the stuff we need.
All right. Any other questions on this page? One more?
Yeah, so Conservation Commission, Department forty seven, we've allocated a budget to them, but they haven't been spending it.
Which one? All of it?
All of it. So do they need as much or do they need to know that they have more to spend?
Um.
And get value out of it? Because they obviously provide a lot of value to our community.
They do a lot of work and this does not look. Okay, because there's another item way over here for their, their operating expenses. Which they are low this year, but last year they were close and the year before that they were close. They use it up. And they get through it. I know that the.
They haven't, they, they haven't spent anything this year, at least.
They've spent eight hundred and fifty.
A more page.
Yeah, this one really, this one covered.
They spent two fifty out of the operating.
They went all the way to page thirty for something even. So their bottom line.
A lot of them.
They have like a lot of categories. So they spent eight hundred so far this year?
No, he spent two fifty.
Two fifty versus the one fifty. The prior years before that, they've been pretty close.
Two, two fifty out of nineteen fifty so far.
And they're, like, one of their bigger events is Earth Day, which is in April. So I'm sure there'll be expenses there.
Yeah. And yeah, I don't know. I think we leave that one alone.
Yeah, last year overall, they spent fourteen seventy two. Year before that was sixteen seventeen in total.
I think having the most.
Being on different pages.
It's hard.
I do think having the most amount of line items might be shooting themselves in the foot, in the foot for a little bit. Like they may just have like program expenses versus like travel fees. I don't know. Well, that's probably a question for them. They like it. It works. So that brings us to page thirty unless everyone had anything else on the Conservation Commission. All right, we'll go to page thirty. Sorry, anybody got anything on page thirty? Mark does.
Again, just trying to confirm municipal court. So we've got the judge's stipend. We've got operating supplies. I just want to confirm the duties of the clerk will be absorbed by someone in Erin's office that's on your, in your department budget.
Actually, after visiting a few times, it's going to be multiples, but yes.
Yeah, but it's.
It's going to be absorbed under my line. I know. It's not going to be a separate clerk.
Right. So there's no, there'll be no clerk expense on, in this, within this department on the budget. Right. And we purchased the software we need with ARPA money.
For next year.
Right.
For this budget.
For this license.
So we'll need it for the five.
Right. Okay. All right. So, and, okay, I just wanted to make sure that even though there are things that we need that aren't listed here, but we've got them covered other places. Just so there's not going to be some surprise, oh, we need.
Yes. Awesome. Anything else on page thirty? All right, on to thirty one. Anybody got anything on thirty one?
Yes. I think this is a bigger discussion about capital expenditures.
Right. So I was going to go through that one because I have a question on one of the capital items too. And so we'll do that one in a second. We'll go through the capital items separately. If that's all right.
Sure. I, I think I'll just make a point since we're on this page. You know, I mentioned before, we got to decide kind of, we have to balance on what the town's needs and wants are. And we had a reduction in three hundred K from paying off the debt service. We have increased revenue this year of around three hundred K. So it's a you're looking at a six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollar swing. So, I mean, there's a couple of different avenues you can go down. We don't spend any money on capital. You can save taxpayers' money. If there are capital expenses, we should fund because they're good for the town. We've kicked in the can down the road for too long. But where's that balance on, you know, how we're going to handle this? Because yeah, right now the mill rate doesn't change. So presumably your taxes won't change, but we decide as a council that there are certain initiatives we want to take. There's some savings to be had because we dropped the debt service.
Right.
And that's where, you know, we're going to talk about roads and infrastructure and things like that. So I just, I want to bring all that up and kind of put that in perspective that it's just like a six hundred thousand dollar swing that we're playing with from last fiscal year to this fiscal.
Awesome. Um, then we have any questions on the revenue? I don't want to go through that line like page by page. Anybody have any questions on revenue? Or should I go page by page?
I just, it's so, I think we, and I don't know where this falls.
Sorry, not you. Go ahead, Mark.
We need to have a conversation about the that's not contingency. What am I?
I don't know.
The fund balance.
Oh, right.
On the fund balance. Because we're using a portion of that to have no increase based upon the change in the Charahoe numbers and some of the other numbers that we have here. I'm just curious what, as it currently stands with the reduction of, and with the change in the Charahoe number, what's the current percentage in the fund balance based upon this budget?
That's.
It's higher than, it's got to be higher than sixteen point six seven because you're not taking as much.
Thirty nine. Last page.
Seven of the supplements we just got?
No, I was with it.
Yeah, that one.
All right. So where is it?
So it's the thirty.
Seventeen point seven seven. Okay.
What do you see there?
Oh, correct. Okay. And so the recommended amount, which is two months, expenses would be sixteen point six seven. So if we were to take that one percent of fund balance, how much, what is that in dollars and cents?
So the bottom, the eight fifty seven?
Yep.
That would bring you into, that's what's available for so that you don't use taxes or whatever. That's what's available.
But that would bring us down to fifteen percent if we used all of it.
Yes, you don't want to use it.
That's what I mean.
But that's what I mean. Like it's, that's your.
This, this question is what would only one percent be?
What, what would it?
Just one percent of that.
What would the dollars and cents be if we, if we brought it down to sixteen? Point. Yeah, take, take one percent off. I guess I could do the math myself.
The eighty fifty seven or thirty four?
You're looking at the same numbers? I think so. Okay, just take it, sure.
Eighty five random, three hundred and nine.
What did you say?
So I don't know which number would be appropriate to take the one percent off the eight fifty seven or the thirty nine twenty. It's eight fifty seven. It's a savings of eighty six thousand dollars. Taking one percent off the thirty one million, you're looking at about three hundred and ten thousand. Yeah. I think it's going to be three thousand. Yeah, so it's a reduction of three hundred and grand.
Yes. What, what do you need? What, what do you want to do with the percentage? What do you say?
Well, so.
That we'll use that?
Well, so it could be, it could be used for a number of things. It could reduce the mill rate down below what it is now. It could be used for some of these other things that we're talking about that we could do and not, and still maintain at zero. I think it should be some combination of all of those things. But I think it's important that, you know, with that change, we've got three hundred and ten thousand dollars that we can use to reduce the tax rate and or do other things that we've talked about. So that's just why I wanted to get that on the, on the table. And that's why I want to know what the number would be.
Brad, I would, I would like to do both. When we were all campaigning, it's all five of us. A lot of people said they love living in Richmond. They love the rural community. They want to see infrastructure improvements, but they also would like break on their tax rate. And I think based on what we have here, we have a really good opportunity to have our cake and eat it too. So I like, like Mark's idea. And as I said a moment ago, I think we need to decide which things we want to invest in that are going to be good for the town long term this year. I suspect that we're going to do the reeval this year. There'll probably be an increase in revenue because there's new developments coming in. We might be in a similar position next year, but we won't have a bond drop. I don't know. It's a really long conversation. I don't have the time for it. Do we have, we probably have to do it before we drop this budget, don't we?
Yeah, I was hoping to get through the capital improvement plan and see if anybody had any questions on those items. And I think that's something that we see where we land after that. See if there's even more. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a good thing to bring up, for sure.
I wanted to, I think that needs to be on the table because that's
It does.
You know, a way to, you know, I saw it initially. It's a way to reduce the tax rate. And then, you know, there are other things that we've talked about wanting to do that will cost money. And whether we decide to do them or not, I don't know, because it's, again, some of them are not just a one year deal. So that's part of it too. You know, you're going to take on a recurring expense over time, you know, and you may not have that luxury. So you got, you got to be careful about what to do, but you know, I think it's, it's an opportunity.
Sometimes though, when you have a reeval, the assessments go up so much, you know, and you have a lot of newer growth. If you lower the tax rate too much, then you're going to end up freezing it. You know what I mean? Like, then it's more of a hit for people.
Well, I guess it's all relative to how much their house improved relative to their neighbors. Mine's going to go up because you guys don't know. I put two buildings on my property.
Now they know.
This year. While they do this.
What do you need to? I'm just kidding.
I can read the look on Erin's face like, you realize what we're looking for.
They don't know in terms of taxes.
No, no, no. I get what you mean. I get what you mean.
Okay.
But that's something to consider as we go, as we go through. I'm skipping revenue questions. Skipping that. And I did, yep. Unless you have a revenue question.
No, I didn't. I just, I wanted to remind you that there was something in the expenditures that we didn't discuss. I don't know if you want to do that before you go to
What was it?
In tax collector.
Oh, great. I think you made a note to go back, but I don't know what you wanted to go back for.
Okay.
What do you want to go back for?
So.
Do you know what line item it is? Do you can all flip over there?
Wish department.
No, tax collector seventeen.
That's page thirteen.
So you know, Marcy's leaving, actually Friday. And not knowing whether I would get a person who was interested in a part time position, I posted it, Marcy works four days. I posted it as a four or five day position to see what I would get. I got one applicant period. And she is interested in a five day position. So I did ask Danielle to run the numbers.
End box clicking at the same time.
Changes the salary from forty six thousand eight fourteen eighty six to fifty eight thousand five hundred and eighteen thousand fifty eight cents. Did I just say that right? Fifty eight thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty eight cents. Now, that's not inclusive of.
Sorry, could you repeat it again? I think I wrote it down.
Yep. Forty six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty six cents.
Okay.
To fifty eight, five eighteen, fifty eight. And then of course you've got health, dental, which you also have with Marcy.
So those wouldn't change because she has them?
No, Marcy had a buyback.
Marcy had a buyback, but a four day person would be eligible for the same.
Right.
Health and dental. Because it's twenty four hours opposed to thirty.
That's this fiscal year we're in. That amount that she just. Amount that she just.
Um, just a, as an offer of kind of an offset, remember that, or you may not know that when we lost the clerk in the assessor's office, we did not replace her. So there's a savings there.
Okay, so what are you looking for from us? Like, uh, approval to put that in?
I mean, yeah, I'd like to put that in for, for next fiscal year and then, you know, use the offset from staff leaving to pay it for the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, and then I would obviously bring her higher to the next council meeting.
Okay, so we, what are we thinking? Anybody got anything? Go ahead, Mark.
So the elimination of the part-time work in the assessor's office is already in this budget? It's.
Yes.
So that's
It is.
That savings is already reflected.
It's reflected for next fiscal year.
Right, right. So we just, it would, it would be the increase, I get it overall. Uh, it's, it's an offset, but if, as far as this budget goes, it would be only an increase of about fifteen thousand dollars on the wage line.
I do think Marcy is an anomaly. I don't think you're gonna find, and she's not anymore. She doesn't want a four-day position anymore. Um, someone who wants to work.
Yeah.
Twenty-four hours a week.
Yeah. Okay, so hearing no objections, I guess we'll be putting that in. All right. Um, okay. Going back to the capital improvement plan, so I don't think I want to go down these, every single one. Does, do people have questions on this? I have one that I want to address. The capital improvement plan item, just like this whole packet.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't want to go, what's that?
Is this set in stone? Is this what's going to go into the budget because?
Well, this is what, this is what the, um.
This was reflected in the budget, but you guys can change.
Yeah.
Because that's what I thought, the transfer to capital, that, you know, all that money.
What it's for, it's for all of these items. Some things you want to keep, like the building renovations for the police department, they're already in the works, so you do need the money on that.
Right.
Police car.
Right.
So how do we know?
Which is why, I kind of didn't want to go through line item by line item, because a lot of them we need to keep, but as you know, I sent a question and I did not understand. And I did not understand the answer, so I'm gonna take us off there. Um, it's the almost second to last one, the two hundred thousand dollars for the Heritage Trail.
Yes.
Um.
Who's gonna ask about?
So the, the description didn't match how the breakdown is page forty-five of the capital improvement plan. Um, so the description said. I had forty-five.
I got forty-five, forty-five.
Forty-six is a senior cent. Well then. Who numbered these? Um, I don't know, I had printing issues with this and I emailed you guys over the weekend and was like, never mind, don't mind. So, um, what are they gonna say? So yeah, so the number didn't add up to me because it says, the very last line here says, plan and design is twenty-five thousand dollars total. The MRP grant's twenty and the town's paying five. Um, okay, then the construction's two hundred thousand total and the grants one fifty and the town's paying fifty K. So then when you go down to source of funds, why is the town funding two hundred thousand when that should be on the grants and donations, two hundred thousand? Or, or actually, what I thought as we broke it down is it should be, you know, just way less, just significantly less. Um, because I think then you, you gave me an answer where it didn't really still line up, but even just looking with what we have in front of us, it should be fifty-five out of general revenue from the town, providing the match, and then grants and donations.
If that was all you.
Should be one seventy.
But like, when I answered you, they have a whole plan that he's putting in place. This twenty-five thousand, this twenty and five thousand, that's just for the plan to do this. So he needs way more money than that. That's what the two hundred is about. Not so much these, these were earmarked for grants that we were trying to get for the grasslands. But this was not what the total cost is going to be. That's why it was two hundred. So it wasn't off because it wasn't just that. But now we have a different grant because that one fell through. And now they've changed it to, now it's the Culver and the Grasslands one. So they renamed it to something else and gave us a different one. So that the amount of money will be different, but if you want to just fund this only for what the grant is going to be for and not for grasslands like thereafter, then that's up to you guys. But that's what the two hundred thousand is for.
Yeah.
For the work that needs to be done.
Okay, what is your question?
So the, do they have a grant for this two hundred thousand dollar project or no? It's a, it's a whole.
They have a grant for a hundred and seventy thousand two hundred, which we will have to come up with forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty of that.
Okay. So, right, so why is, isn't our?
Why does it say grant donations to one K?
Right.
Because we didn't know what we're, we were getting.
Oh, okay.
We didn't know. It was just a, an amount to put in there.
So.
A hold.
No, you're fine. You're having the same question as I am.
So our responsibility for this whole project is about fifty thousand dollars, five thousand for the plan and forty-two-ish.
Plan, the plan is included in this, in the grant that we just received. That's part of it. So it, it's not.
That's why I'm not, right, we shouldn't commit two hundred thousand dollars to something that we only have to spend fifty thousand dollars.
Right, that's what's really confusing me. Does everybody, um, know what they're doing there? I mean, it's an important project. There's, if you go down the Heritage Trail, there's like a side where it's like a woodland trail and there's like the big open side. The big open side is all mugwort, I think. And they're, they're doing like a, an invasive, like trying to get rid of the invasives there, trying to get them in. That's the extent that I know about it. And it's a project I want to support because I think it's important to keep down our invasives. But it's a lot of money for us to commit, and if it's grant funded, then that would be great. And I know that if they didn't get this grant, you know, there are probably other opportunities for them to get it.
I think they've gone through quite a few to try to get it.
Yeah.
This is not the first one to try to get it. So the restoration design is part of this grant and it's five thousand three hundred and sixteen ninety, so.
Just with all the issues we have, I just can't support the town paying two hundred K for this. And I hate mugwort. I hate it. I've got it in my yard. But, you know, for reasons I can't be discussed here, I'd be very careful with what we do with that property.
I don't know, it just, I'm still confused as to what they're actually asking for, because I can't see it in front of me. Um, do you have, like something you could put up on the screen or no? Too much. I just, I don't understand, like, I know you said there's changes, they didn't get this, they got that, but they're still asking for two hundred thousand. It's just, it's a lot.
And just don't give them two hundred thousand. It was just a, a marker.
Okay.
Because we didn't know what they were getting for the grant or not, if they were going to start the project or not. All of these are just suggestions.
Right, so what do they need though for the grant they did get?
For the grant that they did get, we have to come up with forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand?
Five hundred and fifty dollars.
Five hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I would support that. And yeah, Marcus whispered, just talk in your microphone.
Forty-five.
He, he recommended bumping up to nice even forty-five, that way they do have a little bit of wiggle room. Um, just, I don't, that kind of money goes a long way for them. Um.
When did they plan on doing this?
I'm not exactly sure when.
I think he tried, he wanted to do it, um, you know, yesterday. There's a lot of steps.
Didn't it rain yesterday?
No. Uh, it says before spring of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, okay, so I think I would like to cut that down to forty-two, five, five. Sorry, I said that awkwardly because it's getting late. I'm not hearing any objection to that, so we're gonna, yeah.
So just, I, oh, I'm gonna be making motions. I, I, I don't want to fund it.
Not even the forty-five?
Can't talk, I, I'm not gonna talk about it confidential. I don't want to fund it.
What is the, what is the forty-five would be to destroy the mugwort? Is that what that is?
On town-owned property.
Okay. And what are they doing with their, so they're doing, the remainder of the money they have, what are they doing with that? So that'd be a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars that they would have.
That would go back into the.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, because we're not, we wouldn't be funding that, but what would they, what? Two twenty-six minus forty-five?
What?
No, no, she only wants to fund it twen- uh, forty-two, five.
Okay.
So it would just be forty-two, five, and they already previously had six thousand one hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Okay.
From a, um, another plan.
Okay.
Might be reconsidering on the thing about it. If they don't spend this money this fiscal year, I mean, they could just, they could just carry it or we can reallocate it, correct?
Yeah, well, this, that forty-two is our match to this project. And it's not just about the grasslands, it's also about the culvert on, um.
Is that the culvert?
Carolina just now. So, so it's, that's included in this grant. We have to do both.
Right, the culvert was mentioned on another page. Um.
Yes, there.
There's more than one.
Mentioned on the other.
That changes things then.
On the, uh, DPW stuff.
No, it was under the, it was another one that was under the road projects, MRP. I don't know what page that would have been, but I marked. That's all police marked it. Yeah, page thirty.
Page thirty?
We changed.
I guess I want to know what we're funding then. Now I'm confused.
Right, that's why the answer in the email confused me. What's that?
Jeff, where?
Oh, um. So page thirty, DPW has.
Set aside time for a piece of roads and culverts.
Right, so that, these are two different.
Pine Hill and, uh, nope, Caroline and just like culverts. We don't know if this is gonna be the whole entire amount.
Okay.
It's a, that one is, Gary can speak to it, but that one is more intensive.
I just.
More involved.
I just want to make sure that we weren't funding the same culvert on two different pages.
No, and that this also has pine.
Okay.
So it was not gonna be the same.
I'm fine, those are important. Um, so.
It's, the language is in there so that if they run over and we already partially, you know, completed, we have money to complete it.
Yeah.
That's what it's for.
All right, Jim, did you have a question?
I, I do, but I, again, it's outside my wheelhouse here. So the culvert, um, so the culvert, is it, is the culvert drainage or is the culvert the passage under the road? And the reason I ask that is that Pine Hill, I know our, our crew has done a lot of work on Pine Hill in the last couple of weeks to repair the water flow near the culvert at the crossing of White Cedar Swamp, so I don't know. And there's also, they've done, they've done work on the one that's over by the Meadow Brook Stream, so I'm just wondering what, if there's more work to be done, like if I'm not understanding that they, they're just prepping it now or patching it and they're gonna do more, I don't know.
I think it's like a, an actual rebuild, not, I don't think it's just patching.
I think it's a rebuild, but I think we should ask Gary.
Yeah, just curious because they've done a lot of work already and I just have no place for something.
We should have a special meeting with just Gary at this point.
I do think we need to, before we end, determine maybe what department you want at the meeting, so that.
Yeah.
It's efficient. Yeah, what do you got, Tom, Mark?
I, I know some of the, the resiliency or the hazard mitigation is to raise the culvert's higher so the roads don't wash over. So it's not just rebuilding what's there, it's actually changing the.
Yes, that is true.
It's actually the more, it's, it's the higher of this grant, like the more money is for that.
Right.
So.
Okay, so we are settled on the conservation commission and the culverts. Um, did anybody have any other of the capital projects? No?
Uh, just, just clean it up for me. So four to two thousand dollars handles the MRP grant for the Heritage Trail and the culvert.
Right, we, we bumped it up to forty-five funds just to, um, make sure it's covered.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. What about all the other capital improvement projects?
I don't.
Hundreds of thousands.
Right, so we just caught out a hundred and five thousand, so at least there's that. But if anybody wants to talk about a specific item, I think we'll just do that one versus going page by page, because I don't want to talk about any others. But I will, if somebody else wants to. So, do you have one you want to talk about?
I guess I didn't know where to start when I, like, how to decide which ones we want to fund each year, because it adds up thousands and thousands of dollars. That's why I mentioned earlier, what's a need, what's a want? We've got forty pages of capital improvement plans and we gotta sit here in about twenty minutes to figure out which ones we want to fund and it's, I just, this is the thing that like threw me through a loop when I got this this week, where I was like, you know, I don't. I don't want to fund them all. And it's smart, I mean, we, we just transferred a, a bunch of money to capital. We got people asking us to lower their taxes all over the place and we've got all these capital improvement projects and I, I, I'm not saying that they don't have merit, but we need all of them right now. I don't like kicking the can down the road, but like, what's a need, what's a want?
I think that might be something that we have you parking lot now, where you go through them and decide which one you don't want to fund and then bring it to the next workshop. But I just don't, I just don't know if it's worth discussing each individual one, because I went through, yeah, um, I mean, then that was the only one that really stood out the most to me. Um, but you know, if there's others, then we should discuss them at the next workshop, I think.
We discussed the Beaver River Park also. We don't have to have twenty thousand in there. It's really just for if there's any playground equipment that you just replaced it.
That was the other one I had for you. Thank you for bringing that up. The twenty thousand dollars to Beaver River Playground.
Out.
Yeah.
And for next year, or you could just do five thousand, it's up to you.
Um, for Beaver River Playground, twenty thousand, I saw that and I was like, we just used ARPA funds to to pay for that and I would be shocked if we already needed to replenish it. I have not found the page of, um.
Sorry. It was not the whole, we didn't put a whole.
But it was like, we, we replaced a good chunk of it. Um, but it was, we put aside twenty thousand dollars in case a slide broke or something and you know, I support the park, but also just feel like, oh, found it, um, page thirty-six-ish. Apparently Danielle may have different pages than I, um. But yeah, but I was, I put my notes that we could reduce that to ten K or five K, that way we're at least putting a little bit of something away. And then when a slide is needed, if we need a slide for ten, ten thousand dollars, we have it, um.
It's a, just so I understand, the idea here is just to put some money away, twenty thousand dollars away a year. So when we need to replace something.
It's a five-year plan.
Yeah.
So these, these items are just for foreseeable five years.
Right, so, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, so the top it says, uh, FY twenty-three, twenty-four with ARPA and town funding, we spent sixty thousand dollars roughly. So that was what we just spent on the playground equipment. So presumably we're gonna get at least five years, hopefully ten years.
Yeah.
Um, and I get putting, putting something aside, but do we need to put, do we need to have a hundred thousand dollars in five years or is it lower number better?
That was mine, yeah.
Yeah, well, you just replace it.
Yeah, that was my thought of reducing it.
What, what if this could be allocated to Forest and Thomas Road as well?
Well, we could do that. That's the other thing, we could change it.
Yeah, where's that planned?
There isn't one.
There isn't one?
Yes, but we're taking out, not adding.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It's on, it's on page thirty-nine. But if you.
It's, yeah.
If you took that capital improvement and you didn't allocate directly to Beaver River Playground, it's for any recreation, then you might be able to use it.
Well, we could, could.
No, no, go ahead. I want to hear what you're gonna say.
Oh, well, kind of what you were saying, why don't we could park upgrades, so it encovers not, you know, why, why do individual parks, why not have, not that we have. We only have, you know, we're gonna double our inventory, we have two, um, uh, actually three, I guess, if you count.
They have their own line.
So, yeah, we could combine the two, um, and then we could allocate be putting money aside to benefit for Richmond. Be putting money aside to benefit for Richmond Townhouse, um, future plans. And cover things that may come off the Beaver River Park.
Yeah, you know, and I think that's an important point too, because we, you know, Sam, you know, you've been involved. You know, the rest of the administration on the number four Richmond Townhouse Road and talking about the budget.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out what we could possibly do with the five hundred seventy eight thousand we have, and we made, we need to make decisions on going forward there. Like, that is gonna benefit everyone, not that the trail and stuff like that and playground and slide wouldn't benefit.
Playgrounds don't benefit everybody, I'm a mother with teenagers, they don't benefit me. That's what taxes are for.
Yeah, so I think that we could, you know, I think, uh, having a, because I see that first line on the capital improvement.
Yeah.
Series, the five seventy eight for the, that's from like the grant money, but like. Filing money into that so that we could have more money to have more flexibility to achieve the vision for what that's gonna become as we go into phase two and phase three. So, yeah, I'm all for like.
Especially if we get into other phases and we end up needing matches for future grants, it would be good to have a little seed money for that.
Yeah.
Um, so could we shift? It sounds like there's a consensus to shift the Beaver River Park to for Richmond Town.
The whole, I get the whole wording, but are we shifting?
The whole amount?
To it? For this year or are we holding?
I'd still be okay reducing, I don't know how the rest of the council feels to, to cutting it in half.
Well, just to answer your question, like, we just redid the whole park, what does it need?
I don't think we redid the whole.
Did we replace all the equipment?
No.
Oh.
We just did a couple pieces.
I, I would say.
That old wooden silo thing's still there.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So there's still some work to be done there too.
Yeah.
I would say let's keep, keep it at twenty, but we should combine the two park improvements. Something, call it something like that. Yeah, something, you know.
Projects just park improvements.
Yeah, so it's, so it can cover.
It could cover Richmond Townhouse if we needed it, or it could cover the park if we needed it.
Yes, right.
Okay. That works for me. So no reduction though.
Yeah, we keep.
Okay, just clarifying. Any others you want to talk about? What do we got, Dan? Alright.
I'll, I'll come back on Tuesday with, to be more educated.
Yeah, just one question, um, on how this, this material is.
Sorry, what?
Is there any way, so if we have questions on this, for example, is there any way we can understand who the requestor of this is? Because I'd love to get more information on it, but does it say, am I missing that? Does it say who the requestor is?
No, most of the, like, land trusts would be land trusts, Conservation Commission, Conservation, like, there's headings.
Does say Department Boarded.
Right, so, like, so who we, we have to go to the chair of that and then.
Like the comprehensive plan. Talia.
Yep.
Um, actually, all of those at the top would be Talia.
Okay.
And then, uh. Equipment, computer equipment, lecture software, little water filling, which is fun. Uh, police live scan, which we have to have the police live scan.
Yes.
Plan, so that would mean like you have to.
Some of the more oddball ones, I just want to know who, who's the, who's the point of contact that's driving.
They're all different.
Do you know?
Like Talia, yeah, uh, the, all the police stuff would be the chief. And then Gary.
Yeah.
I think if you had a question on a specific one, reach out and say, hey Danielle, I have a question on this, who do I ask?
Okay, so I'll come to you, yeah.
That's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
Um, Mark, did you want to bring up yours tonight? No pressure.
No, let me see what I can.
Alright. Sorry, Aaron, you want to say something while he's, uh, going into that?
I just want to caution, because I know I haven't gotten a lot of things, but. I know we haven't gotten to this for Tuesday, it appears we're gonna have another workshop on Tuesday at five. We have a public hearing in a regular meeting that starts at six.
We're limited to an hour. We should get as much as we can tonight. That's a good.
Taking that into consideration.
That's a good, that's a good reminder. Um, yes.
No, I wanted to give you some more playground information.
Yeah.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but when we did Beaver River, I just found, it took me a few minutes, sorry, I just found the quote on it. We got six swings for seven thousand dollars. Um, a different piece of equipment for ten eight. And another one for twenty six six, and then the surfacing like the, what's on the ground. Or thirteen four, and then it costs us twelve thousand for installation of all of that, so. Basically, like, two small new pieces and some swings and like new wood chips or whatever it is. Was like almost seventy thousand, just to give you a sense of.
Yeah, and, and based on what you have said, kind of reminded me there was a little bit of disappointment from people who use the park, like, oh, it's not as much as before. I mean, I can see that, so I think what we did today, kind of. Splitting the baby, we have the money for the park if we want, if we need to use it elsewhere, we can.
An educated decision, not my decision, I'm not invested in more, more my thing.
Alright, Mark, what one would you like to talk about?
No, I answered my question, I don't need to talk about it.
Alright, so we are done with capital improvement. I think.
We can, we gonna talk about roads, right?
I was hoping so, um, because I know we have it on the agenda in a few different ways, um. We can talk about that next, I just don't want to talk about it too much, so I had put it on. In a way, months ago, before I saw the budget, was considering like a road bond. And the reason I thought about it so far in advance is because that would have to go to the voters, it would be a good time for putting it to a vote if we wanted. But looking at our budget and seeing, you know, we just dropped so much, um, that we're paying towards bonds, I really don't want to put that back, especially seeing that. The next one doesn't drop off for many number of years. Um, but I also wanted to make sure that we're. Planning ahead for the state maybe doing another road grant, as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, so I want to make sure that we have. If, if we get an opportunity to have a matching grant from the state. And we don't have our two thirds put aside, then we're gonna lose that money from them. So, I want to talk about other options as well. That's what's that up there for, I know Dan put up a similar item, which I'm assuming is kind of along the same lines and talk about it all at once. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's. We've talked to Karen a little bit about it offline, but, and we, we've got a list of road paving projects we want to do and. We don't have funding for it, not all of it, and so. It's, it's along the same line, how do we get funding, how do we request additional state aid to repair local roads? You know, I think it all fits in the same discussion, how we want to go about it. People have been complaining about, um. There's an old mountain road, a lot of complaints on that one, complaints on Pine Hill Road, complaints on the, uh, Wilbur. Over Hill, we just got another one recently.
Oh, down in, down.
It's a lot. Beaver River, that wasn't road condition?
No, down and all, there's one down and all. One of the river, is it river?
River View?
Maybe it's river.
Yeah.
Anyway, so. What were you gonna? You wanted to start talking about it?
No, I just wanted to.
Remind us.
Options were going forward, so try to get something going.
What are our options for funding if we don't go to bond? I mean, I, I get, you know, not wanting to do it this year, but, you know, do we start? You know. Let's, let me back up. Is the state offering grant money this year?
Um, I. We're in, we have one on for, Pinehurst is on for.
But that's last year's.
And that's on this year's that we're in.
Right, I don't think we have.
There is no twenty six, and I was told that we will not be, they will not be continuing.
So we're done with state?
Will, they'll change their mind, but it sounds like they're not.
I've heard they may not as well, it was in the presentation, and then whenever you talk prep caller, she, she didn't think it was gonna go through. That was in between me asking to put this up and now, but I, I don't know, I hope that it goes through, but. I don't know, it's tough to plan for it.
I mean, there's basically two options, you either bond or you do pay go, like, we could start putting. X number of dollars aside every year in capital, so, so that when you get to a point where you have enough money to do. Whatever road, you go ahead.
So is there something in here for that at this point? I mean, there are a couple of different.
There's, there's road, but it's only for the Pinehurst match that we need it, that's what's in here.
So there's nothing.
Only for that.
There's no accumulating fund that we've been setting aside for road recreation. And. Realit- realistically speaking. To do, kind of, maybe not as much as we've been doing the past couple of years because we had the state money that we could use. I mean, what's, what's a figure per year?
Five hundred thousand?
Based on the list that Karen has.
Yeah.
Per road.
Yep.
So. You put away a hundred K per year in five years.
Yeah, well, that was, I know that was the, kind of the guesstimate that Gary gave to do Wilbur Hill, which is what? A mile and three quarters or something like that, um. And what's Pinehurst is, I know the contracts. From last year, so it's gonna go up, but it's, it's around that too, right?
Uh, that one's.
Six hundred thousand.
Gonna go up, I think they've.
Yeah, no.
It's gonna be more than that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
What is it?
Um.
Five seventy eight, is that what it?
Yeah, oh, no, that was.
Process for Pinehurst was six hundred K at one point one miles, Wilbur Hills one point five miles, four hundred fifty. Old Mountain Trails, two point one miles, and that cost us, it was four hundred eighty K, seems low for two point one miles, but maybe there's some catch with that.
Alright guys, not to cut you off, but I'd like to have a motion to go past nine PM, please. We got our motion, we got our second, all in favor. Alright, thank you. Continue please, Dan.
So I mean, I'm just reading off the list that Karen has, I don't know if she wanted me to share it, but just to put it in context of how much money. Try to add it all up, it's a few million dollars easily. Wood Road, KG Ranch, Cherry Lane, Mill Road, um, the rest of Carolina New Snack where it's dirt, Susan Drive, then the Richard Deville.
And I think that was a real, Gary can speak to it obviously, but the Cherry Lane and KG Ranch Road. It's involves a lot of.
It's, you know, like a wetland, yeah, there's a lot more.
Even more, and I think the E M has to be involved, it has to be, so it's a lot more involved.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, when we look at these capital improvements, right, I mean, part of the responsibility of the council is to make sure that we're maintaining the. Functioning community and the roads are a primary part of that, so I think we have to make sure we look at that as a priority. And making sure we're funding that as a capital improvement project, because if we're not gonna get funding from the state, we're gonna, we're gonna have. A, a problem, roads deteriorate, right?
Right.
So that's gonna be a priority.
So it sounds like there is a consensus to create a, a capital improvement page item that is this. And the question is, how much do we want to put in? We did just ship some from other capital improvements, um, at least a concom that we can use. We could pull it out of the fund balance, use that, just talking about like options, but also we did make a lot of changes tonight, so. This could all change at the next workshop. I think we should start it slow, because it's new, that's my.
My only, again, I, I, I think that if we, if we could do that. You know, kind of pay as you go, like accumulating money in a capital fund. I, that's great, I just don't know that we have that, gonna have that flexibility every year to. Put six figures into a capital improvement fund, because if, if, let's say, for example. We've, let's, you know, we put a hundred thousand dollars in a year, it's gonna take us five years to pave one road.
At current rates.
At current rates. So it's just. You know, it's, it's, it's a no, it's a no win situation, um.
This is certainly not a problem, it's just unique to Richmond, and especially if state agents are coming for that. I think we don't hope it's happening next year. I think, honestly, um, to this point, I, I would be looking at the capital improvement projects and seeing what we can. Borrow from here to pay for, I, I, as a starting point, I mean, we have to have some money for it.
Yeah, well, and like, uh, Samantha said, we, we took a hundred and plus thousand out of that. Heritage Trail, so that's something.
Started off.
We've, you know, we have, again, I don't want to use all of it, but we've got that money. Fund that, fund balance money that we could use, some of it, um, to, to get it started. And I think, you know, this year, we, we probably have to live with, we're gonna do Pinehurst. And I know it's in this current fiscal year, not next fiscal year, but. That may be it, um, and unless there are some smaller projects that we can, you know, we can fund with, with what we've got.
We don't want piecemeal, so, I mean, some roads have some areas that aren't too bad, some are really bad, is it, is it worse to piecemeal?
That's a Gary question. I think we need a, you know, workshop with Gary, but, uh, but no, you're right, I can think of like some roads, I'm like. There's really bad sections of it, um, the corner, um, on Old Mountain, not to get too specific, where like, you go around. Fourth the end, if you're going from.
Oh, yes.
From, from west to east, and the, the resident there told me that people to avoid the pothole will go in the middle of the road, that's what he told me when he was canvassing, and it's like. That's awful, I'm never knocking his door again because I can't fix his road, but, um, but, but to this point, can we piecemeal something like that, where that's a, that's a dangerous intersection. Where it's really bad. That intersection, it's getting late, sorry, go ahead, Mark, I'm done.
I think what it is, is gonna end up having to be, is we try to put money aside. As much as we can to build a capital fund, but it, it's gonna have to be a supplement to a bond at some point.
Right.
It's gonna have to be, alright, instead of bonding two and a half million, we're only gonna bond two million, because we've been able to put five hundred.
You're right. And that'll bring us to twenty eight, when the other bonds drop off.
You know, so it, it, it's just, the, the reality is, in order to do these projects, you need a big chunk of money. And trying to accumulate that ourselves is, takes a long time, um. Uh, so, I, you know, I think, I think for this year, I think it's a good idea to let's start the capital. Capital fund to at least offset future paving bonds if we have to go that route. Um, or if, who knows, the state comes up with a. Grant project, we've got the match that we can, that we can put in to leverage some of their, some of their money.
What do you think about picking that hundred K and maybe fifty K from the fund balance reduction we just talked about? Start with a hundred and fifty K this year, talk to Gary, maybe we can do that before we adopt the budget, and at least get a sense of. Maybe what we can do, if we allocate one fifty K this year, maybe we can do sections, we get some of the worst sections in Richmond fixed.
Yes.
Patch, but better than nothing.
How's everyone feel about one fifty as a number for this new, uh, page and capital improvement we're creating?
Actually, you already have one, it's the same one.
Which page?
Page that we use for the.
Oh, road repairs and bond funding, I'm on that page, page thirty two.
Yep, we can just add it.
I was flipping around, I didn't even find that one, um.
See how.
So yeah, so it has funding in it of two hundred and forty eight thousand, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be contributing to this.
That's prior year fund.
Right, alright, so it has a balance of prior year funding.
Well, that's, no.
Right?
But that's paying, that's paying.
What we need.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, okay, sorry, my mistake, um.
Yes, we'd add a hundred and fifty to, uh, general or current revenue.
Right.
Sources.
Right, and we've got a hundred and twenty, whatever, we're taking from the, the Heritage Trail and. The other we're coming from.
Right. Does everyone agree with that? I'm not hearing any objections, so.
Let's, yeah, let's put it in and we'll see how it, how the numbers shake out, obviously.
Yeah.
For now, let's put it in there and see where we go.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
And Karen, I don't, do you know how many, um, the, uh, the funding that the state's done for, uh, roads as far as supplemental? How, how long have they, have they been doing that for years?
No, they did it once.
One, they did two years?
Two years.
Two years.
I think it was coronavirus.
Yeah, they had, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I think it's.
So it's not like we should expect to see that return?
Unless there's another virus.
Yeah.
I don't know, um, awesome, so I think that covers the road repair, we've gone through the budget, but now I was looking at the agenda kind of in between things. We did not touch on the grant writer position, that hasn't been worked into our budget yet, unless I missed it somewhere, um. We also had the funding for the ordinance review, um, which I put on the agenda again for transparency because, um. You know, prior, the, the prior term wanted to use it. Which I put on the agenda again for transparency, because um, you know, prior, the the prior term wanted to use it. ARPA funds for it, now this term we're exploring it again, some of it's gonna be done in-house, some of it will have to be sent out, so we should probably consider. What we're gonna decide for that, if anything needs to be. Done outside a house, is that correct, Erin? I know you've thrown a few estimates around.
Yeah, so Georgetown, um, Council Stokes was here at that meeting, we were talking about it, reached out and E M provided their RFP. And I think it was about thirty-five thousand to do theirs, um, but they had. I think it was MuniCode host their stuff. We wouldn't need that, because we have Corfase that hosts it, so. We'd have to, after our review, we'd have to kind of look at, and see what um. That would be, but also, I don't believe that thirty-five thousand accounts at all for any legal review. So, that's definitely gonna have to be looked at. You know, is, you know, is there an urgency for codification? And that's ultimately what it would be, is codification. We're not codified now. Could the review happen on? And a lot of it be dealt with internally, yes, and that's what we do all the time for ordinances, but to have truly codified, that's gonna bounce off state law. And look at what doesn't exist completely. Um, that's really good, but you're gonna do that. So, it's it's a lower number than what I initially had done, um, but also. I don't wanna speak too much, but also, I was eliminating Title eighteen completely out of it, but that, I don't think is going to be the case. There's a lot of legislations that just happened, so. So that's something that you might have to weigh after. Everybody discusses, I know we have Title V on there, but after, there's more reports from the other.
I was gonna say, could we carve out Title eighteen, do it in two pieces?
Yeah, so.
I mean, that's kind of its own animals, to speak. And, you know, it's a natural. Division. So we, you know, maybe we put that one off, since it was just reviewed, we, you know. With the most recent changes, there's gonna be more changes, I think in the next couple of years, it almost makes sense to. Wait a few years, let the state legislative dust settle. And then. You know. Have the review done, what, so what's your, what's your guesstimate? To do? Put Title eighteen aside.
You know, it's hard to say, because I was surprised at how low they came in, and they have hosting, so I don't have any bid specs in front of me that doesn't require that. That would just be a legal review section. Or codification. So we're gonna have our line item for our solicitor as part of the process, but I think. We would have to really go out to bid to see, cause it's gonna be, it's a very unique thing, I don't know of any town that has codified. And not used that company to host their ordinances. I wouldn't recommend, I I've used general, I've used all of them, they're great. However, we have a great resource with Corfase now, so once it's codified, it would be implemented on there, and it's more of a landing page that Richmond's used to. So I don't see that necessity, but I have no idea what that legal, just to review the codification legally would be. But going back to, I mean, I know we've talked about litigation expenses going up in the actuals for previous years. Those costs for planning and zoning, I'm pretty sure you can wire to the big Title eighteen review and the back and forth with the previous. On those actuals, that's why those things kind of fluctuated, so. That part of it, I don't think we're gonna know until we go out. Because no, I, I don't have specifications from any town specific to just that. But, that's not necessarily, we talked about needs or wants. Basically what you said, Mark, it's going through another whole cycle with this new, uh, you know, new group of legislators that have come through. You know, it may make sense to kind of maybe kick that one down the road. And still review our ordinances internally, like we're gonna do, but codify, that codification. There's other improvements that can happen, you know, with the ordinances and checklists and stuff internally. Um, that certainly are gonna have some legal impact for the solicitor, but nowhere near to what codification.
That makes sense to me, what does everyone else think?
No, I think that makes sense, let's see what we can do in-house, and then we'll can address.
Alright, we're done with that item then, um, that's the grant writer position, that one's not factored into the budget, and I. Think that's it for budgety things that are on the agenda. So what do you guys think, or what do you wanna do about funding a grant writer, I know we have information out, we're waiting for more. But that information's not.
Information's not.
Here, like the, like, how much a salary would be, or a. Payment would be for a. Contractor, thank you.
I think we knew based on that grant writer survey, that everybody who had a contract employee was paying five thousand dollars a month, but basically the same.
But that was how many places, like three?
No, there were a bunch that were all dealing the same, I off the top of my head, don't know.
But that's not factored into the budget at all, right?
Right.
Five thousand dollars a year actually isn't.
A month.
Oh, a month, it is, I stopped punching at nine, that's why I made you have to do a motion.
If if we did it, the advantage to doing it as a contract person is it's easy to do it as a, you know, we try it for a year. It doesn't work out, doesn't work out, it works out, it works out.
Seven of them have as a contractor.
Seven?
Seven, and only two had them as employees.
I was surprised by that, I I don't know if I mentioned it to this council, but I know I mentioned to others, like I was at first, like, oh, we should have somebody in-house who knows the town, will. Really, like, know what we need and work accordingly, but it seems like. All the other municipalities are happy with a contractor, so I'm really happy going that direction.
Who was the seven that had?
I don't know if I have that in my.
Uh, North Smith Fields. Westerly, I think, wait a minute.
Franston has Rosewood Consulting.
So I'm 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 listening, like, for uh, Barerville. Yeah, that would be similar, similar, I mean, there's, North Smithfield is um.
I'm not sure.
Okay, so North Smithfield is even more rural than. The other question that follows that is, um, and I don't think this was in the survey, I think I'm wrong, but um. Does the administrator, like, in retrospect, was it a return on investment for them?
Lincoln has one, like I, I pulled it down, they got, oh, I don't have it. I didn't save it, when I was looking, but they got seven million dollars in grants, so like, you pay sixty grand, a hundred twenty grand, you get seven million back. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and if the contract for a grant writer, and I understand the life cycle of these grants aren't overnight, but like, if we were to contract with a grant writer for a six-month period of time. And to evaluate if we were able to capture that amount of money, then that's, 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 you know. That's.
It makes sense, but I just think about how long sometimes grants take, so. It might be too short, like, short of a timeframe, but I agree that there needs to be review.
And I think we should have the flexibility to um, modify the contractual agreement, um, like, we're not contracting for a year, you know what I mean?
So Cumberland pays five hundred dollars a month for their grant writer. They responded.
I wonder about the typo, it's kind of convenient, but it's, you know.
Yeah, it's one decimal off.
I did reach back out, because you mentioned that you were curious. What people were getting for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the, and the only two that answered were Coventry and Westerly. But, I mean, Westerly sent basically two pages. No, sorry, it's over a page, and there's no total on it, I should have totaled it.
Yes, not over a whole, a long enough time.
I mean, they included their six point six million in ARPA. Fourteen million from NOAA. D E M wastewater treatment facility grant for a little over a million. But I don't infrastructure, I mean, it's four billion, it's five hundred thousand, C D B G, C D B G, we're not gonna get unless we get someone specific. To write C D B G grant.
Well, but if the grant writer can write, see.
Yeah, that'd be great, I mean. If you remember, we had, we had had that church community group in here at one time. And then, you know, I don't think. And that was the wrong time of year, when they were here, I remember they were busy and they wanted. The council to have them back.
Well, I like the idea, a contractor. See what they do in a year. Yeah, you know what I mean, like you said, it'd be a win for them, right?
Worth a, worth a sixty thousand dollar trial? I mean, we're in, I mean, you know, I I try to get it, obviously, it's an RFP, you know, I thought about putting some. Performance space, you know, you're gonna at least pay for, pay for your, uh, you know, get back at least what we're paying you with fees.
Like I said, I don't, I say that, but I don't know how much they're gonna cost.
Yeah, right, so.
No, and and I know I talked about that kind of a metric, but like, there's nothing that says we, you know, even on a, you know, we're meeting twice a month, right, every. Every four meetings, we'd have an update from the grant writer, or get some kind of update through you from the grant writer, have some kind of progress update, so we at least know.
Applications are flowing, they're getting them out, yeah, definitely.
What we're paying.
What you get when we apply for a grant.
We have to approve it.
So, I'm just wondering, as part of the. R F P process. Is it possible to sit down with a person and say, alright, this is, you know, you kind of know what kind of town we are, just generally, what? You think we can expect? You know, what, what's your, you know. Expectation, being the professional, you know who we are, you know what's out there, uh, you know, what, what do you think you can do for us?
No, I don't think he's saying we do it, but like, is that something that that you do when you go through the R?
That's what I mean, I'm talking.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, he, she spun it and said, well, you can interview ours, like, no, 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 we're not going to that.
You know, having input.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying, no, no, I'm saying, as part of your evaluation of the. Bitter or the proposer. And it's not just, so this is, this is my fee, this is, I'll apply for grants, it's part of it's.
More than just the R.
You know, knowing what, you know, you know.
One question, give you an example of where you've had success with over time?
Well, Google the, Google the person, but. What, what should we realistically expect? You know, because we've got to weigh your fee. And, you know, the council deciding whether they're gonna accept your proposal, we get to weigh your fee. With what you're telling us, I know it's not a guarantee, but reasonably, you're experienced, you've done this other places. Reasonably, you know, I expect that I can bring in. X. And then we can really evaluate, you know. And, you know.
North Smithfield just hired a grant writer.
Right, so I would want to, like, the reason it's here tonight is to make sure that. If we're gonna go down this road, that it's included within the budget, so we don't miss the train, so we wanna include it?
Yes.
Alright, so.
You know, cause I want you to see both sides of this, don't forget, there's often a match.
Yes.
So, I, you know, if you're gonna do this.
Those grant each. Yeah.
Need to, I mean, I don't even wanna ask you for any more money, so I just want you to weigh this, I guess, in your decision-making, whether you wanna do this, knowing that. There's also gonna be a cost, hopefully, it's offset. To some degree, by the fact that it's getting us money for things we needed to spend money for anyway.
But, no, you're right, we are gonna have to increase the budget based on all those matches, that, that every little forty-five thousand dollar match is gonna add up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, but I think, you know, when we look at, um, I I would hope that we, that we would be approving the pursuit of the grant, right? So like, let's say there was a road improvement grant that this person was going to pursue, there would be a math, we're already intending to fund some of that, so like, I think we could. We could go for the ones that we know we're gonna need, but the other thing is, in this political climate, is a person who's gonna be a grant writer, are they gonna be a bit trepidatious? About what they could actually secure for grants, I mean, I don't, it's a different, a different climate now.
I, well, and and I think that's part of the conversation, some of these, some of the success is, you know. There was a lot of ARPA COVID money out there, now it's, it's gone, and the federal government is not being as generous in giving out money. So, and that, that, again, that's part of the question is, is, you know. Yeah, you know, you've got a gazillion dollars when the, you know, the feds and the state was just throwing money at everybody. But now that things are tight, is it, is it, you know, realistic that we can?
There's some discussion here about, there are different um, consultants, I'm looking in an article from January. Where um, North Smithfield hired a consultant, but there was this other company that had, they had a sixty-day cancellation clause. Um, but this. This same person that has worked with a couple municipalities, she had a thirty-day contract with North Smithfield, within those thirty days, she got him a one million dollar grant. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but this, this was.
Right, so on that one million dollar grant, what was the match from the town?
Doesn't say.
Right, right, so I think that's, that's what my.
Thirty, it's in thirty days.
Pretty impressive.
It is impressive.
And that it was secured is impressive, because they tell you, oh, yes, this is great.
You know what, that, that was money that was like. You know, the state has X number of dollars, and they're spreading it amongst the towns, and you're gonna get. Yeah, any other grant, you're never gonna get that fast.
Does that Westerly list have any dates on it?
That looks like Westerly secured you a new car.
No. He says, um, as our grant writer applied and received over twenty million in grants over the past two years. And is also reporting on them.
Alright, so, council, how would you like to proceed? Would anybody else like a piece of it?
Well, I I think. It's worth allocating some money in in this budget to fund a grant writer and and. Potential match, matches, um. It, I think. You know, sixty thousand a year seems to be kind of the going rate. I think. We can probably find. Through the capital improvement. Projects that we might wanna reduce funding for, the 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 money that we can. Have available if we have to do matches that we don't already have, I don't know that we need to, I think we can find that money other places instead of. Using quote-unquote new money. But I think we've gotta put aside at least sixty thousand, and obviously, if if. The the proposal comes in less than sixty thousand, then we've got that extra that we can use for matches.
You know what we could do, Mark? We just talked about a hundred and fifty K for roads, took, took sixty K out of that, put it to the grant writer, maybe the grant writer. This is wishful thinking, but maybe we get enough grant money to recover that sixty grand we took out of the road allocation. And then that keeps everything even.
We actually decide to reduce the fund balance too, could we pull it from that?
Yeah, we could, we could, we, we could take.
We've made so many changes, though, I'm I'm like, not even sure what our bottom lines are gonna be, I'm nervous that, I'm worried in two weeks, we're gonna be shocked. How, um, how, like. Over, big overview, big picture, how are we looking on this?
You guys cut a lot of the smaller things.
Yeah, exactly.
Money.
Yeah. Just little things.
Think the switch in the capital plan for a hundred and one fifty-one or whatever. But you moved it into roads, so, from heritage to roads, so it wasn't.
Then, yeah.
Really. You can go through capital and try to find more. Sure, how much more?
And there was the one percent production suggestion in the fund balance?
It was suggested, but that we didn't really do, right?
Cause that would return.
Three hundred thousand.
I, well, I. I think we should.
Yeah.
Set the fund balance at sixteen point six seven percent, or seventeen if we wanna use round numbers. Um, and. We decide, and I think we've kind of talked about maybe taking sixty thousand for this. Um, we had the increase in the tax, uh, collector, which is about fourteen thousand, so say that's seventy-five. Um, and then, if there are other things that we had, that I haven't thought of, fine, but the, then we take the rest and we put it. For reducing the, the mil rate.
I think that's a good plan.
Good idea. Hey, I also wanna add that, when we go through our, um, the Title V stuff, one of the questions to Danielle was to make sure we're. Revenue neutral on the fees for the stenographer zoning planning, I mean, that's a few thousand dollars there. But, we've had these conversations that the town might actually be spending money because we're not taking in enough fees when we process. Paperwork, so we need to increase our fees, we're commiserate with what other towns are charging and what our services are providing.
Right.
So I think that should help a little bit, we're not talking hundreds of thousands, but it's nickels and dimes, I mean, it matters, it adds up.
Yeah, no, it does, so just back to switching the fund balances, Mark described, is there anybody opposed to that? Okay, so that's a change that we're gonna have, go forward, um. So, I think.
Did you have that number?
Yes, actually, when I originally did the, the budget with the school increase, which was three hundred, that was part of that. So, it'll be nine hundred thousand out of. Those are six in there, that came from the capital plan, adding three to bring it down to.
Right.
Okay. Um, I think that covers the budget. Oh, Karen.
I, only because I need, I'm getting nervous about rec. I don't know if you wanna make a decision tonight, or if you wanna wait till the next meeting about what we're doing with this. Department, because I need to know whether I'm hiring a rep director.
For summer camp.
What we have now, or if I'm just hiring a summer camp director, I don't want, I don't wanna pressure you, I'm, but I just, I'm not running summer camp.
No?
I like the idea of the plan, I think it just.
Of Karen running summer camp?
No, no.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 it's, um, that, the way it was described, I think it was, there were two things, I wanted to see, um, the numbers on how it looked, like, you know, as you described, uh. Community director, or whatever it is, and then the three subcategories, and I also just would feel very comfortable if the solicitor gave the perspective on. That it is an organizational change, and that it's not something, that we're moving things around, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, we do have numbers, right? I mean, isn't this?
Yeah.
Is that, have we seen it?
No.
You did mention it.
Yeah, and, and, and like Danielle said, in, in FY, the, the fiscal year you're looking at right now, next fiscal year, starting July first. The increase would be six twenty-four, right? Because.
Of the.
Six hundred twenty-four? Is that what she's saying?
Six hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah.
I thought the six twenty-four is current with the year we're in now, and then it can be around twenty grand for the next fiscal. What we're debating.
Kate's still covered by ARPA though?
Kate is covered by ARPA herself, yes, that's, yeah, so the difference would be, uh. Switch from recreation, part of the recreation funds would go towards Kate's doing the umbrella, and. This year it was six hundred and ten dollars, I think, for the rest of the year, that we would be a little short.
And then, was it twenty-two-nine in next fiscal year?
What is it next?
Twenty-two-nine.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Like I can read the word nets in the charter.
Or what?
But, okay. I, we have to address that at some point.
Yeah.
I get it. But if we decide this is the route we wanna take, then Karen knows, I just gotta hire a summer camp director. We don't have to make all the other. Changes. Um, if, you know, uh, we'll have to obviously make the budgetary change to increase. The, the wages in that department by whatever the. Well, or twenty, whatever it was.
Twenty-two, isn't it?
Yeah, or twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-two-nine and two.
Actually, I'm sorry, but that's not even, it's not even that much. Look at that page over, the second page. It's actually, yeah, it's actually only fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-four.
This was fifteen thousand three hundred.
Four, okay.
That's not, fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Alright, so, I mean, I, I would be good with. Putting another fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-four.
Consolidates a bunch of things, makes things more efficient by having one person oversee all of it. And we can see how it goes for a year.
Yeah, I also wanna raise one point too, that, um, as we move forward, as this number four Richmond Townhouse Road comes to fruition. And we have this person managing that, I think we will discuss in the future. The possibility of doing what other towns do with their public property and renting that out, so that could become a revenue generating. He's a property that this person can manage, and that's gonna help to offset that. I don't know how much.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I think. That's true, um.
Yeah, I was just waiting.
No, sorry.
I, I would just wanna, so Kate is under the ARPA, when does that stop?
That pays her through.
December of twenty.
Calendar year or twenty-six.
Right, so then after that, we'll have to add that to the, which will be around.
Be six months at.
Well, it would be fifty-eight thousand for everything.
So thirty grand for six months?
Yeah.
That, that will be the next budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
No, I, I get it, no, we gotta understand the long term, the long term of that, no question.
We didn't answer your question yet, what do you guys wanna do?
I already said.
Alright, sounds like we're going in the direction that you would like, Karen, to hire a summer camp person, and, um. I think there'll be other long-term savings too, I just don't think that, I, I think there's little things, like, as. The senior director moves out, like, maybe that's something that they could be able to take on. So, yeah, and when that happens. Um, so, now have we finished discussing the budget? Anybody else got anything they wanna say? Aaron, you making a face, you got something?
Only to determine what we're gonna do for next week. One, if we're gonna have another budget workshop, it sounds like we are, but two, could the agenda deadline for that be today? So, what you would like to see, I will be posting that workshop agenda tomorrow. So, are we just gonna continue, are we just gonna add continued items, one and two, which is fiscal year, twenty-five minutes of a budget. And plan our capital projects. And then, do you want the grant writer back on, or how do you, what do you?
I don't think we do, because they're already included in the budget, um, they're included today for transparency, and also to make sure, you know, we got to them. But I don't think it's necessary to include it on the next workshop unless anybody disagrees.
No, I think three through eight are now gonna be included in the next workshop, because we worked into the budget. Items, uh, sorry.
Three through eight will not be included.
Correct.
Okay.
Meaning they're included in our discussion next week, therefore you don't have to have separate agenda.
Right. Yeah, it would just be one and two on there.
And no other ads based on our conversation.
Not at this point, no, I.
Think we'd like.
Does anybody have anything? Like, usually it's more like, yeah, nobody's got anything they wanna add?
Just, we're gonna have to ask Gary to be there and think, we had a lot of questions for you.
Anybody else?
I don't think so, I think we had the most questions for him. Um.
There are some other minor things that maybe can just be done through emailing.
Did, did you, so you said sixty for a consultant, but did you say anything for a match?
We didn't.
No.
No, we're hoping they could work out of the capital plan and other budget line items.
Yeah, let's, let's.
And, and see how it goes, yeah. Um.
Do you need anything else from us, Danielle, to have a, basically a revised budget for us to look at? No, I just wanna make.
No, I think.
You're sending it to her tomorrow too? Oh my goodness. So quick, I'm sorry, but, um, we appreciate all your work on this and for listening to all this and, and taking all the feedback and getting it done so quickly. What a great, uh, introduction to Richmond. Are we bad? We're, we're better than West Greenwich though, we'll shop for a minute, um. Anyway, moving on, then away from the budget, on to nine, um, discussion consideration of assigning leads to take. Uh, you know, AM partners to take action on goals and initiatives adopted by the council, May fourth, uh, February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I have a few people can bring them, we tried to talk about it at the last meeting, so, Dan, wanna kick it off? Then I'll go to Jim.
I, I think I'm gonna suggest, um, considering that Talia's gonna provide us with the comprehensive community plan, um, presentation and summary next week. And given that it's already nine forty, I think people are absolutely oosed, um, that we continue this to a meeting. Um, in the future, that we should probably decide on.
Yeah.
Usually I'm like, I'm here to work, but I'm just, we just spent four and a half hours going over numbers.
Was that what you were gonna say too?
I, I need a handout for each of you to make it easy, so, but I can distribute this and we can use it for next time. Essentially, that's all I had, so.
Yeah, I mean, our other meetings do get long too, um, they all do, and I didn't think this would take too long, I thought it would just be like, a quick assignment and then move along. Uh, because this item, and, and this was my concern with the last meeting, was it's very broad, we should not be getting into the weeds on anything. It's literally just, this is an assignment and that's it, um, because if we get too into the weeds, we'll end up. Talking about people or properties or things that aren't noticed, and we'll have a notice problem, um. So, I don't know, I'd like to get it out of the way, hate to say it like that.
You get a binder too?
Um.
I just.
So these.
Looking to help a list.
Yeah, no, this is actually just our goals in a list, and that is what it is, and. What do we wanna do?
So, I had a, just a question, or just a suggestion, obviously there's, um, you know, um, if each of us are looking at like. You go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten positions, there's five of us, so each of us are pretty much gonna land on a lead and a partner on something, so names appear twice, so, um. And go from there, so it should be pretty straightforward, just, you're right, who's lead and who's partner?
We got number one covered, don't we?
Mark did something wrong then? No, okay, sorry, I thought you did, um. Yeah.
So, um. Unless there's an objection, I wanna, for, for number one, I'd like to leave that with partnering with you, unless you have an objection to that.
Um, I don't know what the difference between a lead and a partner would be, I think it would be both or nobody, yeah.
So, I just followed what it was listed in the thing, so this could be co-team.
The thing you created.
No, 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 I, I read it off the, um, what was listed on the.
Oh, on the agenda, that's right, I need to go sit there for a minute.
I read the notes, and it just said lead and partner, so this could be co-team, whatever, uh, so co-team is totally fine, so, you and I on number four. Unless anybody has any objections, Jim and Sam, I'm running it both under the lead thing.
You mean on number one, Jim?
I'm number one for number four, Richmond Townhouse, yes.
Awesome.
Alright, done, survey says?
Madam Cherry should probably mention the reason we're assigning two counselors, so we do not break OMA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the reason why there's two and not five people on each.
Um, what does everyone else think for anything else?
Well, um, I'm just looking at number three from the grant piece, I'd love to see you involved with that, unless that pulled you away from something else that you wanted.
Me?
Yeah.
Um. I don't know, um.
Unless you felt, you wanna be involved with others.
Ah. I feel targeted, why do I?
No, no, no.
She's obviously had a plan here.
No, I.
Looked in that binder.
No, I mean, honestly, I was gonna, I was looking at number four, because that was one thing that was on my list, that was also on Dan's list, and he and I, like, I think that. Wasn't even a council majority thing, it was more ours.
Done.
Um, but I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna jump on two things, then, now I'm out.
I'm good, that's not.
But also, like, I look at number three, and I'm like, okay, encourage opportunities for grants, like, we just hired a grant writer, in my opinion, check, like. I know there's more we can do, but.
Mark, Mark seems really invested in that, making sure we have the right consultant with the right, uh.
Mark?
Contract and everything.
Okay.
Mark, and who?
I'll do it.
Alright, yeah.
I would like to work on number five, please, which would cover me with Sam, so I, I would work on number four with Sam, which is a hazard mitigation plan, and then, number five. Someone else?
I would be happy to work with you on that, unless, unless.
That would, um, I don't think, sorry, I just, I think that you're already on four, and I was looking at you for two.
I'm on four?
I'm sorry, number one, see what you did, um, but I think that you'd be better at number two, be, like, I would assume that would be the two of you guys with the.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, so number two would be Jim and Jeff? Yeah, okay, so I'm out of, uh, yep, that's, that's two for me, that's two for Jeff, so.
The last one, under utilized properties, would be Dan and Mark.
Oh, you're stuck with me, Mark, it's great.
Sorry, dude. See, a little worksheet did help.
It did.
That's awesome.
Yeah, look at that, it's like it just all worked out, um, this didn't even take that long.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, assignment of the co-partners for the five. Unified council goals.
Alright, we got our motion, we got our second, any further council discussion? Alright, all in favor, uh, alright, all opposed, nobody in the U of C meeting, alright, um. Cool, so that covers that, and then the last one was a request from me for just a quick discussion on staff involvement on council initiatives, initiatives and direction from staff, um, from individual council members. And I brought this up because we have a more ambitious council than ever before, and it is wonderful, and I love it. But I wanna make sure that the town staff feel empowered to tell us when we're overstepping, and if we are, and. Just be able to say, like, take a step back, and I know that I've been in a position myself where I wanted to. Um, do something with the dog park, and I was told, yeah, Sammy, you might be overstepping, and I took a step back and let, and let them do it, so there's a little bit of a, that was during my last term, not this term. And, that's all I want to do, is make sure everyone's on the same page, that if a staff member feels that they're being directed, that they can say no, they can say, put it on an agenda for a vote. And go from there, so.
Yeah, they're not telling you guys that already? Okay.
You get that all the time, alright.
Yeah.
Cool, staff members in present, in presence with us, you will pay with that, right? That makes sense?
Yes.
Alright.
One thing we could clarify maybe for department, is that when agenda items do occur. That maybe, that come on there, that maybe it'd be great if you guys can set an expectation, are you gonna? I see agenda items added by members, even if I know about some of the things because of. You know, inquiries, that this, that we wouldn't be prepared to give that report just because it's on the agenda, so, like, Dan's items. On the con plan, Talia's gonna give a report later, because it was a motion of council, Title V was a motion, so I'm gonna give an update later. Um, but I think it would be really helpful for some, for staff to just ensure that that is your intent when you add items, that. When you add items, that, because most staff see the council agenda on Thursday when you get it. And they don't see attachments till later on Friday, and then it's mon, it's Monday, they get Monday, and then Tuesday's the council meeting to report.
Yeah, no, for sure, I don't think that that was ever an intention, but I did see it happen last time where I'd asked for an update on something and. Somebody wasn't even involved, was like, write a report on, what's going on, you know, um, so that's a good clarification as well. Awesome, so do we have anything else we need to discuss on this workshop, or can we adjourn?
I just have a few more.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds. Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.